Good evening. The April 29th meeting of the Evanston City Council will come to order. Would the clerk please take the roll?
Councilmember Nguyen. Councilmember Nusma.
Here.
Councilmember Burns, not here today. Councilmember Sufferton is online. You're muted, but he is here. Councilmember Revelle, here. Councilmember Reed.
Here.
Councilmember Hakkaris.
Here.
Councilmember Kelly.
Here.
Councilmember Harris.
Present.
And Mayor Abyss.
Here. We have a quorum and are prepared to do our work for the evening. The first item on our agenda is my public announcements and proclamations, of which there are three, beginning with World Migratory Bird Day. Whereas birds are at once wild, exotic, and familiar, and among the most beautiful and easily observed wildlife that share our communities; and whereas migratory birds provide ecosystem benefits that include dispersal of seeds, pollination of plants, pest management, and balancing insect populations; are a vital part of the food chain, are indicator species of environmental and human health, and are important to the entire global ecosystem; and whereas birds are fellow creatures being pushed to steep population declines due to human influence; and whereas since 1993, World Migratory Bird Day has become a primary vehicle for focusing public attention on the nearly 350 species that travel between nesting habitats in our communities and throughout North America and their wintering grounds in South and Central America, Mexico, the Caribbean, and the Southern U.S. And whereas the theme of World Migratory Bird Day 2024 is insects and birds; and whereas there is a major concern about the plight of insects which are themselves in precipitous decline; and whereas Evanston residents can help migratory birds and the insects they need by planting native plants, reducing the use of pesticides; and whereas Evanston's natural areas storted by volunteers attract and support birds and insects; and whereas the city of Evanston has adopted a bird-friendly building ordinance to reduce architectural and lighting hazards for birds, and has included bird protection in the Climate Action and Resilience Plan; and whereas World Migratory Bird Day is not only a day to foster appreciation for wild birds, but also a call to action to support the interrelationships among birds, plants, and insects. Now therefore, I do hereby proclaim May 11th, 2024 as World Migratory Bird Day in Evanston, and urge all residents to celebrate this observance and to support efforts to protect and conserve migratory birds and their habitats. And I know we have several advocates who are a part of advocacy for sustainability broadly and birds in particular to accept this proclamation. If I could ask you to come forward, I want to thank you for your dedication to sustainability in our community and for your important work on this and many other projects. Awareness Day. Whereas myalgic encephalomyelitis, heretofore to be described as ME, also known as chronic fatigue system, CFS, or ME/CFS, is a severe multi-system neuroimmune disease characterized by overwhelming exhaustion, cognitive problems, pain, post-exertional relapse, immune dysfunction, headaches, cardiac symptoms, dizziness, and balance problems. As many as 75% of patients become unable to work, and an estimated 25% become unable to leave their homes or even their beds. And whereas ME/CFS has been found by the National Academy of Medicine to be a legitimate, serious, and complex systemic disease that frequently and dramatically limits the activities of affected individuals; and whereas patients struggle to access appropriate medical care, the rate of recovery is low, and patients are at increased risk of suicide; and whereas according to the U.S. ME/CFS Clinical Coalition, ME/CFS affects an estimated 1 to 2 and 1/2 million Americans at an annual cost to our country of $18 to $24 billion per year in lost productivity and medical costs. And whereas according to Dr. Anthony Fauci, the chief medical advisor to the President of the United States, patients post-COVID-19 can develop a post-viral syndrome that is strikingly similar to ME/CFS. And whereas ME/CFS experts conservatively estimate that about 10% of those diagnosed with COVID-19 will develop lingering symptoms that meet the National Academies of Medicine diagnostic criteria for ME/CFS, effectively doubling the prevalence of ME/CFS. And whereas awareness of ME should lead to increased funding for research and result in better medical care with more accurate diagnoses and appropriate treatments, now therefore, I do hereby proclaim May 12th, 2024 as Myalgic Encephalomyelitis Chronic Fatigue Syndrome Day in the city of Evanston. And I do believe we also have advocates from the community that was involved in helping educate me about this issue to accept this proclamation, and so if you would be willing to come forward, we'd love to present this to you as well. Last call. All right, we will be making sure this gets to them in another manner before too long. Finally, this is a little bit unusual and extremely awesome. I am delighted this evening to have the opportunity to present a certificate of acknowledgement to Avery Jenkins, a young woman who I had the privilege of meeting just a few minutes ago. I want to first read this to you all. Avery is a nine-year-old Evanston resident making a difference in her community with Avery's helpful hair kits. As a result of her own hair journey, hair care became an important topic that she wanted to share with others. Avery has donated her kits to Lydia Home Evanston, Childcare Network of Evanston, and a number of other organizations. She loves having the opportunity to help others through her hair kits. And I just want to say something about this young woman. She's nine years old. I was asking her, kind of, where did this come from? And she talked about an experience she had three years ago, so a third of her life ago, and how that stuck with her about how the need for culturally appropriate hair care products is really significant in people's lives and having them makes a difference. And she just kind of carried that memory and decided it was time to do something about it. Now she's reached the ripe old age of nine, and she has spearheaded this effort to make a difference in a lot of people's lives. And so it is a real joy, Avery, to recognize you because I think you're deserving of appreciation and recognition. But I also am glad we got to do it here in front of City Council because I think it's just a good lesson for all of us. Every time something happens in our lives that solves a problem we have or educates us about a problem that a person might have, that's an opportunity to do good for somebody else. And I think if I can remember in my own life to follow your example, Avery, about learning about problems or opportunities to help other people, and if everyone in this community, I think, could follow that example, I think we'd all be in a really wonderful position. So I just want to say thank you very much. And before we applaud, I know that Councilmember Harris wanted to say something as well about Avery, so take it away, Councilmember.
Thank you so much for recognizing me. So first, I'd like to thank Ms. Cindy Reed for bringing this humanitarian to my attention. She's a member of the Sec-- so thank you, Ms. Cindy Reed, for acknowledging the great work that Avery is doing. Avery, you're amazing. At nine years old, there are people who are 10 times your age that have not done what you've done so far, and that is very impressive to me, and that's why I felt it was important that we bring you here this evening. As the mayor stated, if we had this kind of mindset at nine-- well, at six, I just learned, we only think about ourselves, right? We haven't necessarily learned to think about others. And if we could put that into a frame of mind, and I'm 55, and I have to continue to remind myself, it isn't about me, it's about the bigger. And you've done that successfully at nine, or six, six to nine. We'll do that, okay? You recognize the need, so that makes you very special to our community, to the people that you are helping serve. I just can't imagine I was playing hopscotch at nine and not thinking about helping anybody but myself, so I appreciate that. Mom, I appreciate you because whether she was born with that or she watched what you did, something rubbed off. And so I appreciate that you gave her the fortitude, the space, and the support to do something like that. I think it's a family thing, I think it's a community thing, so I would be remiss if I didn't tell Mom thank you as well. So what I did, I'm just one of those people. I went out and I tried to get supplies, and I have some beauty supplies that two places provided me with. I also purchased some things, and I asked them for business cards because I wanted them to get credit. And I also had a beauty salon made the bags, because I was like, I need stuff for 10 bags, and she made the bags. I was like, oh, thank God, one last thing I had to do. So we want to share those with you. But I've also made a bag for you because you're giving to other people, and I don't know how much at nine you know to pour into yourself, but you have to do that to be able to give somebody else. And then I made a bag for Mom because, again, I think it's important to recognize somewhere, whether, however that was first. So as you come to get your award, I have some gifts for you, and I'm also going to plan a paint party for you. The supplies didn't come in. Mom says you like to paint, so the supplies haven't come in, but I'm buying you paint supplies so you can have a paint party with you, and I think it was 12 of your closest friends, and the other 12 can just watch. All right, Avery? So thank you so much for all that you've done for our community. Oh, yeah, thank you.
Yeah, I know, I want you guys to get real close. Sorry, I don't want to turn you around.
Yeah, he gets close. Thanks, Avery. One more. Can I give you a hug? Thank you. And that's-- no, thank you. Mom, let me give you a hug. Thank you so much. And thank you, family and friends, for coming. That means she's making a difference.[834.12][834.12](applause)
We're on a bit of a tight clock, but I know Councilmember Reed had a quick, quick comment.
Yeah, I just wanted to add my voice to folks who are appreciative of what you've done. And really, I'm looking out and I'm seeing what looks like generations of family, you know, Mom, I'm thinking I'm seeing brothers, sisters, cousins, maybe grandmas, and so-- Grandma, there, all right. And so I just want to highlight that this is what community looks like, this is what family looks like, and it very clearly shows when you have that network around you of people who love and care about you, what happens. And so truly, truly amazing, and I'm inspired by you. Thank you.[882.93][882.93](applause)
Thank you again, Avery. That concludes this evening's announcements and proclamations for me. The next item on the agenda is the City Manager's Public Announcements.
Yes, good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of City Council. Clerk Mendoza, we're going to jump right into a presentation on Putting Assets to Work. I want to specifically thank the Government Finance Officers Association, GFPA, Common Ground Institute, and Urban 3 for their efforts in working with our staff over the past several months on the Putting Assets to Work incubator. I'd first like to introduce former Congressman and former Mayor Ben McAdams and also Dr. Kyle Weedberg, who has held a variety of roles in senior positions at school, municipal, and state positions, and currently works for GFPA. So at this point, I'd like to turn the presentation over to Mr. McAdams.
Thank you, and great to be with you all today. We just wanted to give a quick update. We want to hope to save the majority of our time for question and answer, but I wanted to share with you to just recap a little bit about what we've done here with the Putting Assets to Work initiative. So you're seeing here the work product that you have received as part of your council packet, but that describes a putting assets to work process, and this is our playbook that we're delivering to you at the end of this process. But putting assets to work really is a concept that is not new. In fact, it's been used and tried and true in Europe and Asia. Some of you may be familiar with the writings of Dagmider and the Public Wealth of Cities that looks at the balance sheet, the assets that are owned by cities and counties throughout the United States, and identifies this as real source of opportunity for our communities to unlock potential to solve some of our greatest challenges. So with the Putting Assets to Work incubator under the Government Finance Officers Association, we've worked with cities and counties across the country to identify their assets and help them to put in place policies that can unlock the value from those assets. We performed an asset map, an asset scan of the city of Evanston. This is where we go in and look parcel by parcel at the properties that are owned in the city. We identify those parcels, first of all, those parcels that are flagged by your county assets or is tax exempt. And from there, we can pull out properties that are owned by government, by nonprofits, and then we start to hone in on properties that are owned by the city. So you see here a parcel map that's identifying city-owned land. We found almost 12 square miles of city-owned land in the city of Evanston. Just want to go through this. So then we start thinking about how you can unlock those assets. We can go through the asset maps, which you've got those, just in the interest of titles are attached in greater detail to the report that you've seen. So then what we do in this report is we dive into some recommendations that we think that you can look at as a city to start in some immediate actions you can take. So we see some great opportunities in the city of Evanston. First of all, to begin to address your affordable housing need. The cities we've worked with across the country, this is a priority in so many of America's metros, is the need to provide affordable housing for our residents. And so we think this is an immediate action that you can begin to take, building on past success. You know, I say this work is not new, and it's used quite frequently in Europe and Asia, but I would also highlight that it's been used in the city of Evanston. We think that you can take it further, and you can expand upon the work, but the tools are not new, and your staff has used them very capably in our estimation in the past. So you see here the next steps. We talk about maybe putting some to bring some consistency, so this isn't something you are reinventing every time you do it, but bring some consistency. We see enough assets that this is something we think you can do as part of your functions. So bring at least a half-time employee, identify some properties, at least three, preferably five properties, so that you can get some economies of scale in doing this work, and then work with a developer and private capital.
Hold on, let me-- Ben?
Yeah?
The slides have not been advancing, or is that-- do the slides appear to be advancing on your end?
Oh, you know what, they're not. I'm sorry. Let me just see what that is. Let me try and maybe reshare it and see. This is the slide that I was talking to, so I'm not sure why it has been advanced, but I was talking through some immediate actions here. There, it looks like it's changing now, so--
Yeah, looks good.
Yeah. So I was talking about the asset map here and the parcel map that we identified that of parcels through the city of Evanston that are city-owned, and roughly 12 square miles of city assets there, some of which, you know, are parks lands, for example. You may-- some of these may be more difficult than others to use. Some of them may be assets that you decide to preserve in its current form, but we see here a lot of assets that could be used for use in-- actually, I'm sorry, this is the city of-- a map of the city of Atlanta, so I should-- we can go to your asset maps, which is another city that we worked with that we were just showing there. And as an initial opportunity, we think, we encourage you to look at an affordable housing initiative here focused on some of your assets, maybe three to five assets that we think could form the basis of doing some of this work. As a second step, you see medium term there at the bottom of this, we talk about revenue generation. We think there are assets that could, you know, not every piece of land has to be an affordable housing development. In fact, even if your sole focus is affordable housing, some parcels might be better utilized as a revenue generation, and by generating revenue, that revenue can go back into affordable housing. So we encourage you to think dynamically about how you use your assets, but we think there are some opportunities for some revenue-generating assets. And then, thirdly, when we think about one of the best assets that the city of Evanston has, it is the lakefront. And in this case, it isn't a surface parking lot, but it is one of the defining characteristics of the city of Evanston. And so maximizing the return on the placemaking, the quality of life, and even revenue-generating opportunities that can come from the city, from the lakefront, that we think is a prime asset that maybe over time and incrementally is something we would encourage you to focus on. So I'm going to share with you real quickly the-- what we've seen with the asset maps. And then I'm going to turn it over to my colleague, Kyle Weedberg. But this is the-- these are the asset maps that we, when we look at the assets of the city of Evanston. It's like it is not advancing again, so let me just try that one more time. Okay, so what we did is we went through and looked parcel by parcel at the city of Evanston, and we looked at the value of parcels. Here you see the value per parcel. So, you know, it makes some intuitive sense that larger parcels are going to be bigger, that are more valuable than small parcels, but that's probably not the metric you want to look at when you're looking at the highest and best use of parcels. So here, what we did is we looked at the value per acre of your parcels, so you get more of a heat map approach. So irrespective of the size of a parcel, where is the value greatest? We turned this into a three-dimensional map here, and you can really see where the most valuable parcels are in the city of Evanston. So what we think then is looking then at taking that from all parcels and honing in on public parcels. We've got tax-exempt parcels, and then roughly 7% of the land of the city of Evanston is city-owned properties. They're highlighted here in black, and then breaking them down by ownership class, what are they used for currently. To just put this into perspective, roughly, you have assets roughly the size of 5.5 James Parks. So this is just to give you a kind of a local reference point to how much land you own in public assets in the city of Evanston. We think there are some examples of what you can do with that here, some examples that you already got, looking at some surface parking lots and how these properties can become places to live, affordable housing, revenue generating, other opportunities for the city here. So we are-- we were very happy with what we saw with the city of Evanston and the work that you've already done, and the opportunities that are coming from that. We think you're in a great position, especially since you've already done some of this work. We think you're in a great position to take some next steps, and we have some very specific recommendations that we'd like to talk about, about what some of those next steps could look like, very much, in a very detailed fashion. So with that, let me turn it over to my colleague, Kyle Weedberg.
Thank you. And first of all, Council, we want to thank you for the opportunity to work with Evanston. We have been impressed with the team that you have assembled. It is a community of incredible and rich assets in terms of people, in terms of your community and its positioning, not just in terms of holdings, but a history of being an inclusive and supportive community. We also think you're in a perfect position to be having this conversation, have seen a lot of communities that have moved to a place of being in a really economically challenged position. And when you are broke, being poor is hard every day, and so when you are having those challenges around economics, it's the right time to have this conversation. We think that you have an engaged council, a fantastic professionalized team. It's the right time to be thinking about this work. And Ben talked about this, but I've been in public service a long time, and I think that a read of this report, and when we make these presentations and have these conversations with Council, there's a lot of the monetizing that gets heard. We're not pushing you to do anything in terms of selling land. In fact, we think that there's an interesting intersection between utilizing the land and monetizing it. What we mean by that is they're pure public goods that you're responsible for the provision of, that the market will never solve for. And so to do those works, you need revenues to make that happen, and in some cases, the utilization of these lands differently rather than just being on the rolls could utilize the land for a public good, or it could utilize the land in a manner that derives revenues that supports those public goods. The successes in this and the implementation plan, we ask every city we work with, we've worked with 16 of them now, what are your goals? What are you trying to do? I'm impressed with where Evanston is at in terms of that goal recognition statement. I think there is some really good work that has been happening to this point to push these conversations. We heard some of that in the earlier council dialogue. And so in that, what are you trying to do, thinking about monetizing this land in a different way, is not to have the fire sale. It's not to turn this land over into the private sector, but rather to find a way for you to utilize the land in partnership with potentially private sector partners, or university partners in the case Northwestern, or development partners where you would keep land lease in hold that can deliver some of the things that have been talked about. So Ben, as you advance this, what the team has done with the Evanston city from the manager perspective and from the economic development perspective has already shown some success. I don't know, Ben, if you could advance those slides. There's been a couple of examples of projects that have already happened with the Chicago Avenue and South Boulevard, and some of the developments that Ben showed earlier. You're already in conversations and considerations around the Civic Center and the Police and Fire Center. Each of those instances, and I think you're having the right conversations, it's not just about where the work moves, and that's an important part of the conversation, but you're carrying some really serious deficits in terms of the assets that would need huge investments, and so thinking about whether or not you as a city want to make those investments or somehow transitioning those deficits to be utilized in a different way and maybe eliminate that as you move it into its next life cycle of use is an important and, I think, interesting conversation. So you've got a team that's working in the right direction. They have identified a timeline that we think is both doable and appropriate to keep the momentum of the project and the work going, up to and including bringing more information around assets for consideration in May, and reassigning or hiring some staff starting this summer to implement this around your council goals for '24, '25, but then also having some longer-term projects and considerations in terms of some of the other projects on the midterm and the long-term basis. And then thinking about that which is most valuable and needs the most public input and consideration, and I heard you talk about some of the surveys earlier, which I think is a great idea, but the Civic Center, Police and Fire, the Cultural Arts Center, the Noise Center, and then the lakefront, giving those long lead times, but really thinking about instead of-- and there is not in the report that we have given-- in terms of, uh, some of the other, uh, projects, uh, on the midterm and the long-term basis. And then thinking about that which is, is, is most valuable and, and needs the most public, um, uh, input and consideration. And I heard you talk about some of the surveys earlier, which I think is a great idea. But the civic center, police and fire, the cultural arts center, the noise center, and then the lakefront, giving those long lead times. But, but really thinking about instead of, 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 and, 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 and there is not in the report that we have given you, there is not a statement of do this or do that. You know Evanston better than we ever will. And so these are your decisions and these are your, uh, initiatives. Uh, but we think the framework is, is, is a good one. We think the team is, is dynamic and doing a good job. We think this is a prism through which you can push some decision-making to take some properties that have been sitting fallow, um, and underutilized and use them either, uh, for, uh, direct public service or, um, in partnership with, uh, some, some development, uh, to, to generate public good and, and potential, uh, resources for the city. So with that, we'll stop and open this up to questions. But again, thank you for the opportunity. This has been fantastic. And we, we actually had the opportunity to bring a group, uh, in January, uh, which all of the Southern partners were very upset about, uh, uh, coming to Evanston in January. But, uh, um, the, 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 the groups from Texas were very impressed with the work that you guys have been doing already.
That's interesting because in our experience, people always feel fortunate to visit Evanston. Um, thank you very much. We begin with Councilmember Newsma. And I'll just say, um, everyone will be given their usual time allotment. But is, is it correct that one of the two of you has a hard stop at the top of the hour?
Six, 10.
Or at six, 10 our time. So I would, if, if we could be somewhat rapid fire with questions and then the sort of discussion can follow. But we'll go Councilmember Newsma followed by Reid.
If we, if we can, before we go to the questions, I just wanted to add one more thing to the presentation. And that is, uh, you know, we applaud again your leadership. Um, we want to put on your radar a, um, a federal grant opportunity that is very much aligned with this work could help to support you taking the next steps. It is called the Innovative Finance and Asset Concessions Grant Program under the U.S. Department of Transportation that supports jurisdictions looking at publicly owned assets that are within, uh, half a mile of, uh, transit infrastructure and how, uh, how to bring more people to live, people or jobs to be close to transit and better utilize federally funded essentially transit infrastructure by, by doing infill work. And so we think this is an exciting opportunity to receive some federal funds to, to support your next steps. And we're in conversations with, um, the, uh, city manager and, and staff about applying for this grant and, and we are supporting the, um, if, if you choose to go after this grant, we, we are happy to support with grant writing and other services. That's all.
Thanks so much. That's an important addition. Councilmember Newsma followed by Reid.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, in the interest of time, I'll skip my preamble. We can come back to that later. I'll get right to my questions of which there are three. Uh, number one, how typical is it in your experience, um, uh, that, uh, how does Evanston compare with our one-third, uh, fraction of our property being tax exempt? Are we an outlier or are we how unusual are we in that regard?
You know, we, we've done this now with about 15 cities and that is pretty much in line, um, you know, within, I'd say plus or minus 5% with every city we've seen. So it is, um, surprising to us and now over time it's less, it's less surprising, but that, that's pretty much right in line. And so we think that that shows that there's really some economies of scale to do this work and to do it more than just a one-off.
I'm glad I asked. That's not what I would have thought, but, uh, certainly informative. Uh, question number two, uh, you are recommending or suggesting that for the role of government lead, uh, we engage a third party partner. And I, I just want to clarify, uh, number one, that that is somebody else other than the private sector partner.
So we think that one of the, yeah, it is different. So one of the ways to scale this is, um, you know, there are different ways you can approach it. But we think that having somebody who, you know, if, if you find this asset that maybe it belongs to Public Works or it belongs to, uh, another government entity, looking to your Public Works Director and asking them to negotiate a housing, uh, a housing agreement with a private partner, a private developer is probably not the best way to do this. So you can have that function be in-house in the, in the city that's, that's doing that work, but you've got to have some centralized expertise of somebody who's going and saying, okay, Public Works has this parking lot that they're using. We wanted to turn it into a housing, but I think through offsetting parking needs and how do we do this? And, and, and having that central function. So by having that be a private party, sometimes what you can tap into, instead of having that workload fall entirely on the city, you can get private parties who are willing to do that work and modeling at their own expense, uh, because if they know that they'll have the opportunity to, to partner with the city on a project. So, uh, we think there's some different pieces in the mix there, but it is probably a function that can be inside the city or outside the city, um, but in that mix. So the city of Atlanta created the Atlanta Urban Development Corporation. That could be a nonprofit like that or it could be an entirely private party. There are different ways to approach it. But we do think it is different than the, the developer who you're going to be partnering with.
But, but this is not an abdication of responsibility or, or, or a complete, uh, removal of the city. In fact, quite the opposite. We also made the recommendation that there be some staff bandwidth. Managing any contractor, managing any contract, managing any external requires, um, good diligent staff work. And, um, part of the, 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 um, uh, lack of momentum on this, um, in conversations with the team, uh, is a lack of some of that bandwidth internally. And so enhancing that internal bandwidth to help manage more external, uh, partners is, is, is probably the sweet spot there.
Right. So I'm curious about how we would identify and recruit some outside help to, uh, assist staff. Is it an RFP process?
Yeah, I think this, yeah, I, I would, we would say probably doing an RFQ process because, um, maybe it's not specific to an exact parcel, but this is analogous to things you do in other contexts. So, you know, when you are issuing a sales tax bond, you, you most likely have, uh, bond counsel or a municipal financial advisor who, who you previously selected under an RFQ. You don't have to write an RFP for every sales tax bond you're going to issue. You have somebody who's already qualified for your procurement, who you can just pick up the phone and say, we're thinking about a bond. Can you help us assess the market, uh, help us with the underwriting? You know, this probably is also similar with, um, real estate purchase and sale. Uh, you don't do an RFP every time you want to. It, it, sometimes you do this in-house. I know as a former mayor myself, sometimes I would look to my real estate people to do a purchase and sale. But sometimes it's complicated enough that I would look to a real estate agent to represent us in a purchase or sale. Uh, we don't have, we don't do an RFP every time we want to find a real estate agent to represent us. We've done an RFQ. They're qualified to represent us in these negotiations. Um, oftentimes, usually, in fact, we won't pay them anything. They will collect a fee off of the transaction itself and we get all of those other services for free. So it's probably analogous to things you're already doing that we think you can do an RFQ and select, um, you know, ideally select more than one entity who can be a qualified partner to advise you in some of these transactions. They'll be, they can go out and work with the development community, with the investment community to find the right mix and bring it back to you as a proposal, just to, just as what happened in a purchase or sale with a real estate agent or with a bond issuance in your municipal financial advisor.
Thank you. I have another question, but, uh, we can come back around if there are other folks.
Councilmember Reid.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilmember Newsma for those questions. Um, since you went in that direction, I'm going to go in a slightly different one. Um, one, uh, I am a, a big 3M fan. Um, you know, I've watched a lot of strong towns material with Joe Minicozzi, I believe. Uh, and, uh, so really a fan of the, the mapping tools that you, you all use. One of the questions that I have, well, I did find it interesting that some of the most valuable properties happen, a couple of them at least happen to be on the south end of town, uh, the 415 and another parcel that I'm not quite sure of. But I, I, one, one thing I'm curious about is, and, and I, I spoke with the city manager about this during the process and was hoping to see some data on it. But I know one of the things that you all have, uh, uh, some research that you all have done was, I think in Minnesota, where, um, there was a town where the, um, that was, I think, developed before a law passed that required that there weren't houses built along the, uh, the lake there that would cut off public access. Then there was another town that developed after, uh, this law was passed. And so they had no houses along the lakefront or structures cutting off public access. And what was found was that, um, the, uh, value per acre was increased further into the community where there was not public access cutoff. Um, and so I'm seeing some nodding heads. So I think both of you are familiar with what I'm talking about. I was curious to see that here because Evanston, unlike our neighbors, uh, to the south, Chicago, we do have some development along the lakefront that cuts off public access for, for private homes and for the university. Um, and the university less so because the public does have access to some degree. But, um, does your data maybe show that because of, uh, that we're losing value by having some of the lakefront cut off?
Yeah, we didn't get to that level of analysis with your data. I think it, um, we've, I've seen the, the reports that you're talking about. It is intuitive, I think, that, you know, the more people and the more those properties are able to enjoy access to one of your city's greatest amenities, greatest assets, the more valuable those properties are going to be, the more that prosperity is going to be shared more broadly. And so, um, we do, it's, it's why we highlight as one of the, the top initiative that we think you should focus on is not just looking at your vacant parking lots or your, your used parking lots, but to focus on that asset and how to monetize that asset in a way, not for your general fund, but for the quality of life, uh, value enhancement for the residents. So, yeah, you're, you're absolutely right. We think that that analysis that has been done elsewhere would certainly apply to the lakefront of Evanston.
And just out of curiosity, do you think, oh, sorry.
Just going to say the democratization of that, of that lakefront, um, uh, should not be inhibited either. So as you're looking to those monetization, uh, um, opportunities, making sure that, 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 that access remains. And then for Evanston, certainly you have a couple of nodes of access. Um, and, and, and that breakage that you talk about happens. But, but thinking about that activation on, 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 on both sides of the Northwestern campus, um, and you have some really interesting opportunities in those regards.
Yeah, thank you for that. And, and, uh, two more questions on this same point. Um, do, do you believe that the value, as far as the, the city is concerned, that we were, based on what, uh, is going on in Minnesota, do you think it's possible that the city is recouping the lost value through property taxes? Do you think those folks who are cutting off, uh, uh, public access are likely essentially paying their fair share through property taxes? Or do you think that the value that is lost, um, spreads further than that?
Well, I think, uh, you know, to be fair, this would be another level of analysis that, that we could do. Or, or in, in reality, this is something that our, our colleague, who you mentioned, Joe Minicozzi in Urban Tree, does really well, looking at the property tax allocation and how that is spread across, uh, property tax owners. Uh, my instincts agree with you that you're probably not recouping the value. But, um, you know, that would warrant a deeper level of analysis that could answer that question. Uh, absolutely.
Okay, um, and, uh, I will reserve, I'll come back to questions that are more focused on this in a second. But that was something I've been curious about for some time and I think it's a great opportunity. I, I'll just ask one last lakefront question. Um, when, when you say, you know, putting these assets to work and activating the lakefront, um, and you, and you mentioned that we need to, uh, democratize the lakefront. Um, we currently charge folks who don't live in Evanston, um, quite a bit to visit our lakefront, both in, uh, an access fee to, to visit our lakefront and in parking fees that we don't charge to Evanston residents. Um, my view is that, you know, the couple hundred thousand dollars that we're getting in, you know, charging folks to access the beach and the, again, couple hundred thousand dollars that we're getting in, uh, parking, actually, I'll stick with the parking. I like that. Um, but in the, the access fees to the, to the beach that, um, we're potentially losing out on value, on, on other value that could be added just by increasing the number of folks who utilize the asset. Give any insight there or thoughts there?
Well, one of the thoughts that we put forward with the, the, that, that question of, of, of access was thinking about it differently, right? The, the idea of, of, of doing some temporary, um, structures for not just parking, um, uh, of, of cars, but bikes. So thinking about how you could do more capacity lift in terms of, of access. And then, um, we saw a couple of places where, um, it's, uh, being able to spur, uh, some sort of, of pleasure craft in, in terms of, of canoe kayak, paddleboard, those kinds of things. Um, again, thinking about how you can increase the number of people that have access with it without really, uh, jumping that price point. I hear what you're saying on the, the non-Evanston residents. Again, that's a question for, for you. I think what we were talking about in some ways in that democratization is making sure that people that live two miles down have some of the same abilities as people that live two blocks away, uh, to come in and access what is an incredible resource for your community.
I would also, yeah, I was also just going to add that when we talk about the lakefront and as an amenity, we do think it is a defining characteristic of the city of Evanston. Um, and enhancing that, we think is, is, um, a, a great use of, of time and resources. But monetizing that is also an option. I think, I would say monetizing through the lens of enhancing the quality of experience for Evanston residents and, and perhaps visitors. That's a, you know, that's probably a policy question that's best left to, to city council and leaders about how much you want to, to do that. But if you think about, um, you know, when we saw the lakefront, yeah, uh, it was winter. So, you know, there weren't a lot of people out there. But thinking about things like food establishment, other recreation amenities that could be there that enhance the quality of the experience for residents and, and users and, and visitors alike. And that, you know, not only can it enhance the equality of the experience on the lakefront, but it can also be a revenue source. So deciding, you know, do you want to have more residents by lowering the parking fee and, and make that up on the, on the backend through, um, fees of people, you know, who are of activities on the lakefront, food and beverage and, uh, rental of, you know, beach equipment and whatever. There's, there's opportunities to, to make up that revenue on the backend if that's something that's important to you. Um, I think you, that what I, we, we would say, we're not locals. So we don't know exactly what, how to tune that dial and get it right for the community. We defer to you on that. But there are opportunities to look at this in, in numerous different ways that we would encourage you to think about.
Thank you. Uh, this time no one is asking to speak for a first time. So we go back to Councilmember Newsma with four minutes left.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, so my third question is kind of an open-ended one. But one of the suggestions I picked up on in reading this report was, uh, the possibility of deepening our collaboration with Northwestern University. And I'm curious from your perspective about what that might look like. Acknowledging that there's nobody from Northwestern here in the room and will be talking behind their backs, but I would love to hear what you have to say.
Well, I, I'll, I'll start and then I'll pass it to Ben. I mean, there's a couple of places where, uh, the, and, and, and Paul showed us a, a, a really a, a, interesting, uh, place where, um, there was an unnecessary traffic break and barrier that, that, that stopped some flow between Northwestern and downtown. Um, so thinking about how the connectivity is enhanced in terms of, of flow from the, the campus into, uh, the businesses, uh, downtown on the retail and, and, um, consumer perspective in terms of, of restaurants and, and, and shopping versus having traffic breaks. There are basic ways that, 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 that those could be thought through. And as you're thinking through that, going back to the campus and talking about what shared amenities and, 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 and work you would like to see done together. I know there's some conversations going on. And if the collaboration happens together, then the question becomes, does it remain, um, part of, of, of a nonprofit, uh, uh, entity like Northwestern and off the tax rules? Or is it a possibility that it has, as more of a joint venture, um, it could move on to the tax rules as, as a lease? So I think there is a couple of options. Rethinking joint projects about whether or not they live on city, Northwestern or kind of a third structure that may, may be tax bearing and yielding. And then thinking about places where because there wasn't joint thinking, you put barriers where barriers didn't need to be. And some, some joint conversations coming back to enhancing flow and connectivity uh, between the vital, uh, pieces and parts of, of your, your connected communities.
I just want to come back and, and highlight a, a slide. Thank you, Kyle. But this is the slide of, of, when we look at tax exempt assets. And, um, it, my wife is in it, uh, works for the University of Utah. I spent most of my career in local governments. So this university-city, the dialogue is one that we take personally in our home. But you look here, uh, the, the tax exempt property, 7% of the city of Evanston is tax exempt. There's another, or, uh, city-owned land. There's another 26% that is not city-owned but tax exempt. I'm going to guess that a lot of that is, uh, Northwestern property. Not, not all of it, but a lot of it is Northwestern. Now, in defense of the university, I think you also have to acknowledge that they also are a defining characteristic of the city. They bring a lot of people who eat at your restaurants and shop at your stores. So they aren't, you know, the, the relationship is one of mutual benefit. But looking at the extent of tax exempt land that is most likely university land says that, um, I'm not saying it's a drag on the, on the city. that, um, I'm not saying it's a drag on the, on the city, but I'm saying it's a relationship that is worth exploring how to derive greater mutual benefit between the city and, and the university. Some of that could be, you know, we think, um, there are a, a lot of options that could happen with your civic center, but the proximity of the civic center to the university is certainly worth a, a, a conversation about how, you know, what, what amenities, maybe taxable amenities is the city, is the university missing that the city could help to provide to enhance the university experience for students and faculty, but also, um, benefit the quality of life, you know, reduce the, the barrier between the city and the university and, and generate some shared activities that can be to your mutual benefit.
Right.
Yeah, we're, we're, we're really pushing for active and not passive decision-making on this. There are cities that we can point to like Boston that has lost, um, a healthy amount of really high-dollar taxable because of speculative purchasing by Harvard and MIT and the like. And so, you know-
Oh, Kyle froze.
There's, that, that moment of cutoff is only explainable by a conspiracy.
With the MIT filter.
All right, well-
All right, I'll, I'll-
Go ahead, Jonathan.
Go ahead and ask my next question, which is kind of a follow-up. And on the other end of the educational continuum, we have in Evanston, um, a K through eight school district, which is an independent unit of government in Illinois, as I'm sure you're aware. Uh, so it's not something we as city council have any, uh, official or formal, uh, control over, but certainly as residents, we're stakeholders. Um, school district sixty-five finds themselves in a position where they are contemplating the closure of one or more school buildings. Uh, I am wondering to what extent it might make sense to collaborate, uh, with the school district as they, uh, figure out what they're gonna do with these properties and how we could put them to best use as a community.
I, I would absolutely, in that case, high, high priority. School districts, you know, um, even more so than cities, just, they're not in the business of thinking about placemaking or, um, high use of assets. They, they really have a, a specialty that is different than what we see in local government. So to the extent that you are building this capacity, uh, within city government to rethink your assets and how to derive better value out of your assets, lending or partnering with the school district and lending your expertise to that is also, can, I think, also be a valuable, valuable exercise.
Great, thank you. Do I still have another minute or two to? All right, what I was gonna start off, uh, by saying, and, um, you know, thank you for being here, uh, is, um, that it's nice to hear some positive feedback, uh, from outside of Evanston on several initiatives that, uh, are already underway. So, uh, I was pleased to hear, uh, that your team kind of gave us a thumbs up on what we're doing with, uh, the South Boulevard parking lot and, uh, evolving that into an affordable housing development. I was pleased to hear some outsiders give us a thumbs up on our civic center relocation initiative. Um, and I'll also point out that on our agenda, uh, later on this evening is, uh, taking some action on making the most out of our lakefront. So, you know, I'm happy that we're already, uh, starting to walk in the direction that you're, uh, that you're suggesting. So, thank you.
Yeah, we applaud the incredible vision you're having and the actions you're taking, very forward-thinking.
Thank you very much. Uh, this time there's no further discussion. I just want to say thank you very much, uh, for all the work. I found this report very informative, uh, frankly provocative in a, I think, a, a positive way. And, um, it, it goes without saying, we're not gonna just go off and thoughtlessly implement everything you suggest. Um, but what I think also should go without saying is that we have highly significant, important, socially meaningful and financially impactful decisions coming at us, whether we like it or not, relative to utilization of city assets. And I, I think this is very, very, very helpful information. And the, the mantra of don't let these decisions happen, uh, be proactive and thoughtful and creative about them in advance is, is I think a very good one. And, uh, because of my unwelcome speech of mine, we now have another, uh, another question. Councilmember Ravel.
Excuse me, well, my question is more, I guess, for a city manager. Um, just what, what are the next steps for, for us? I notice, um, that we are admonished, um, um, to avoid analysis paralysis. And so I'm just wondering, um, there, there are a number of next steps that are laid out for us here in this report, and I'm wondering, one of which is to have some additional staff focused on this effort. I'm just wondering what the next steps are for us here.
Sure, thank you, Councilmember. And I want to take this opportunity. Ben, I know you're literally about to walk down the hallway and jump on a plane. I don't want you to miss your plane, so thank you so much for being with us this evening. Um, and Kyle, thank you so much for joining us from Australia. I just really appreciate both your time tonight. Um, and then Councilmember, to your question, um, GFoa and, um, Common Ground Institute has, has offered to kindly, um, help us with the, with the grant writing process. The grant is due in mid-May, and the idea is if we were able to secure that grant, that would be, uh, some of the funding that we'll be able to use for the FTE that was mentioned in the report.
Councilmember Hatakakis.
And, uh, this is another question for, um, City Manager Stowe. Um, just for, uh, members of the public who are listening and, uh, watching, um, I know looking at the report when, you know, they identify assets as things that we should move on immediately, I know immediately for us and means a lot, is a lot different than, you know, your personal life, like the way municipal government works. So what, I think timeframe, what, what are we looking at for, um, movement on some of these properties?
Yeah, thank you for that question. Obviously, uh, we want to apply for the grant, hopefully secure the grant, and then there'll be several months, um, of, of community engagement and several steps and processes. So it's an important point that we're, we mean, immediately, we don't mean, uh, tomorrow.
Great, thank you.
Uh, this time no one is requesting to speak for the first time, so we go again back to Councilmember Reed with a minute left.
Yeah. Um, we all love grants, so certainly supportive of that. I, I, I would like to, um, I think there's, you know, uh, the, the grant is, is a great first step that'll give us some funding. I think we, we really need to, you know, sit down and not just have this be a report that gets filed away and, and, and really critically take some action on this. So I, I, I would encourage us to, is there a committee where some of this can live, uh, so we, we know that it will continue to be, uh, a priority for us? And I guess it's really a question for all of us.
Sure, I definitely open to suggestions, and I don't mean to imply when we say not tomorrow. Obviously, we want to move with a sense of urgency, and we don't want to fall into paralysis by analysis, as Councilmember Ravel shared.
Yeah, so I, I just guess for my colleagues, I'd love for us to think about if, what committee, you know, I don't know if finance and budget is the right place, it may not be. Maybe it's a standing committee of the council, APW planning, I don't know. Maybe it's split between multiple, uh, committees. Um, but I do think we, we need to make sure that this work stays at the forefront. And also, I, I'd really be interested in us continuing, uh, in whatever capacity is possible, uh, to work with, uh, GFoa and folks like 3M or, am I giving them a new name?
Urban Three.
Urban Three, yeah. Um, um, we, we need to continue to work with them. You know, I have the interest in looking at, uh, you know, how we can better utilize and activate our lakefront or, uh, you know, more equitably, in a more equitable fashion. Um, but there's a whole host of things that I think we could, um, you know, really gain from a closer relationship with GFoa, whether it be on, um, you know, our, our practices around bonding or, or others that I think, uh, you know, their insights, uh, would, would be helpful for this body.
Councilmember Kelly.
Thank you, yes. I think this is all very interesting. However, I do think we do want analysis. And we just received this packet, and I, um, you know, I need time to process this and to review it and to get feedback from other organizations. And I'm not comfortable with even committing to, I think there's time for us to give direction to even apply for the grant. Um, the grant would, you know, would, would take staff time. I would like more time to review this. We've seen some very big failed projects as a result of privatization, like, um, City of Chicago parking meters and others. I just think we have to, um, we need more time to really go through this. I didn't have a chance to finish reading this entire packet. So I, I'm not jumping quickly to say, yeah, let's just move forward with all expediency on this. I think we absolutely have not spent the right amount of time doing due diligence analysis of this.
Thank you very much. Seeing no more discussion, thanks again, and I, I think one thing that is very clear is there's a lot of big decisions ahead of us and a lot of important considerations, and so lots more to come. The next item on our agenda is communications from the city clerk.
Thank you very much, Len, to speak to you. It was a, it was a privilege and a pleasure to do so.
Oh, thank you so much. Happy Australia.
Thanks.
The next item on the agenda is communications from the city clerk.
I have, uh, two public comments, um, both related to the same thing, one from Vicki Proctor and one from, um, Paul Breslin, um, both asking for the Noyes Cultural Center, um, process to slow down, to give the community enough time to look at the report. That's all, thank you.
Thank you very much. Um, this evening, uh, we have, uh, relatively few people, uh, seeking to give public comment, uh, so they will all be, uh, given three minutes, uh, in what is a honestly pretty unusual occurrence. Nobody signed up on the in-person sheet, so we'll begin immediately with those who signed up online to speak in person, beginning with Brian Lovejoy, who will be followed by Linda Fowler, and then Paul Farand. Is Brian Lovejoy here? If not, we'll move ahead with Linda Fowler, who will be followed by Paul Farand, and then John Kennedy. Is Linda Fowler here? If not, we'll move ahead with Paul Farand, who will be followed by John Kennedy. Is Paul Farand here? If not, we'll move ahead with John Kennedy.
By default.
Wouldn't call it that.
Well, I've got here, anyway, um, with regard to Noyes, John Kennedy, third ward. Regarding Noyes, there's some, actually some good news. Um, in the 2024 adopted budget, the city had allocated 7.8 million for HVAC at Noyes in the five-year CIP. Um, that's good. That's a number. The lifecycle cost analysis in your packet in the Noyes section talks about five phases. The first phase being the HVAC and the electrical, which have to go in sequence. Um, they quoted, this is a geothermal application, they quoted 4.8 million, right? Less expensive. With the government grants at forty percent, which by the way, the government grants cover not only just the geothermal wells, but the systems and the distribution within the building. So all of that comes under the pervy. I don't know if that would extend to the electrical that would be required, it might. But let's just assume that's savings that are there. You're talking about bringing the cost of replacing the near-to, near, you know, usable-life HVA system for about 2.9, call it maybe three, three and a half million dollars. You're saving somewhere between four and five million over your CIP estimate for next year. Um, I would urge you to proceed with that Phase One. Now with regard to the other 17 million of the 22 million, you know, a consultant's job is to come up with everything under the sun. It's up to you guys to char-, to identify the priorities. Um, and there's a couple of key things here. You know, given our deficit spending, which you all have talked about in the budget periods, you have to make these trade-offs and choices. You can't do everything under the sun. The other key thing is that the Noyes is not our only CARP-focused building. Um, given the 80/20 rule, in other words, you get eighty percent of the benefit from twenty percent of the allocation or the effort or whatever, we should be spreading our precious resources for meeting CARP goals across all of our facilities, not just focused in on just the Noyes. What this really means is that the trade-offs need to be structured in the CIP process and brought to you as trade-offs across all of our Evanston, uh, possibilities. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Uh, this concludes the in-person portion of public comment. We now move to the online commenters, beginning with Paul Breslin, followed by Jean Breslin. Are the two of you on the same Zoom account? Um, so we're having trouble locating Paul in the Zoom. So we're, if you can hear us, we're trying to, uh, ask you to unmute your Zoom. And this is for, this is Ms. Breslin, who is the, the account that we see in the Zoom waiting room. Okay, um, looks like this technical difficulty is not being resolved. Um, hold on, we're gonna try, tried making you a host, did that help? All right, I'm sorry about these technical difficulties. As always, um, I know we've received something from Mr. Breslin already today, but as always, you can, uh, send something, uh, through the public comment system or Clerk Mendoza that'll be shared with all of the council, and we'll, we'll make every effort to, uh, figure out how to address this in the future. Uh, that concludes public comment for the-
Yes, sir.
Yes?
Uh, there are a number of us here from the Noyes Center. I didn't realize we had to sign in. Can we bounce off schedule, maybe get a moment to say something regarding the proposals for the Noyes Center?
Um, so, so here's how we're gonna handle this. We've, um, just to give a bit of context, uh, because you're obviously presenting a sympathetic situation, um, we have, for a variety of reasons, made an effort to stop bending the rules relative to public comment. Frankly, what happens is you're super sympathetic, others aren't, all of a sudden I'm discriminating between people, uh, that's not appropriate. However, as you may know, the next item on the agenda is the question, is the Noyes issue itself. And so during, uh, discussions on any issues, we allow council members to invite, uh, experts in the community to answer questions. So should that happen, uh, you'll be welcome to participate in the conversation in that way. Um, we'll move forward then with, uh, item SP1. Just before we get there, I just want to remind folks that, um, uh, we have a four-digit number of pages in our packet, uh, this evening, uh, as a result of, uh, the meeting, uh, three weeks ago not occurring owing to a lack of quorum. So this is an absolute beast of an agenda. Um, it's got lots of important things, and we don't want to make, um, decisions rashly without adequate discussion. We also, um, I think, don't want to make decisions poorly eight hours from now because we're tired. And so I would just urge council to be mindful of the length of the agenda when they, um, uh, structure their participation in these items. So we begin with special order- So we begin with special orders of business, of which there is one. Would someone care to make a motion to facilitate a discussion relative to the NOISE Cultural Arts Center?
Mr. Mayor, I will move item SP1, discussion of the NOISE Cultural Arts Center building feasibility report.
Councilmember Newsman moves that we discuss the NOISE Cultural Arts Center building feasibility report. Councilmember Wynn seconds. We'll begin with a report from staff.
Honorable members of the city council, city clerk, city manager. My name is Laura Biggs. I'm the city engineer. I'm here to present the results of a study we did on the NOISE energy modernization. The NOISE Cultural Arts Center is a building that was designed by architect Daniel Burnham. It was added to by Perkins &amp; Will, which is another famous local architect. This building was originally constructed in 1892 as a school, and it continued in operation for decades. Ultimately, it was shut down by District 65 due to declining enrollments. This building was then purchased by the city of Evanston for 1.1 million dollars. The building generally serves as a community center, but primarily as an art incubator for sculptors, artists, and arts organizations. We do have the Fleetwood Jordan Theater Program, which is a city program that does perform in one of the auditoriums in the building. A couple of years ago, as we were talking about challenges related to our capital improvement program, the city council expressed concern that things just kept bubbling up, and there was no framework for considering all of those things. So last year, we talked very specifically about there being some specific challenges. Eleven parks that are aged and need replacement, the lead service line replacement problem that we are dealing with in terms of trying to get lead out of our water, and six buildings that the city is, that are really driving the majority of the facilities capital program. Of those six buildings, NOISE was one that was identified and is sort of the last one that we are bringing up for discussion. Three of those buildings are either under construction or have an approved plan by city council. Three of them, we are still discussing. That includes Police Fire Headquarters, Civic Center, and NOISE. The reason I bring this up is because it is really challenging to discuss just one of the buildings. It's important to really look at the big picture. So in this particular building evaluation study, we were really focused on modernizing the HVAC. The electrical system goes hand in hand with that. We also generally looked at things that relate to energy efficiency, things like LED lighting modernization and roof insulation, looking at the windows, but also generally looking at things that we knew we would be required to do if we did a significant building project. That includes upgrading the building to be compliant with ADA transition plan and ADA rulings, and then also aligning with our climate action resiliency plan. This building is a little bit different than some of the other ones we looked at in that we did not really look at things that would change the operations of the building or address issues such as security. When we looked at HVAC evaluation, we primarily looked at four different technologies. Heat pumps, which can provide both heating and cooling. We looked at air source and water source. I know I'm using a lot of jargon. It's better to find in the report. We looked at those things. We looked at variable refrigerant flow devices. We investigated adding a geothermal system, and then for building code requirements, we would need to add forced air ventilation. And for that, we looked at dedicated outdoor air supply systems. This report goes quite a bit of detail and freely interchanges the use of capital costs and lifecycle costs. So I just wanted to make it clear the difference between those two. Capital costs, which is certainly of interest, is the cost of initial installation only, and that's the cost that the city pays upfront for projects or issues bond debt in order to pay. And then we have lifecycle costs, which looks at a long-term over the life of the asset. What are we paying in terms of periodic operation and maintenance? And then brings it back to kind of one number. In this particular case, looked at net present value for $20.23. Those are a little bit softer in that those costs are more, we're doing our best prediction on what the costs for maintenance are going to be. So when we looked at the different options, we started with the easiest being heat pumps and variable refrigerant, variable refrigerant flow, VRFs, that did not include using a geothermal system. And then we looked at using heat pumps and variable refrigerant flow that did use a geothermal system. All of these options align with CARP, meaning that they are going towards an all-electric or entirely renewable option for providing heating and cooling. The challenge that you face when you do that, it becomes really difficult, just because of physics, to provide all of that heating and cooling with just one system when you go all-electric. So it is really helpful to bundle and have at least two systems that can help supplement each other when it gets to extreme temperatures. So for that reason, we were looking, all of these have an electric boiler backup option as part of it. But having both VRF and, or having both the heat pumps or VRF and the geothermal are really helpful in being able to cool and heat on extreme days. I will also say that one thing that is really driving us in our analysis towards geothermal is if we want to really generate all of the energy ultimately on-site, it's almost impossible to do that with solar based on what we know about solar. So then you're really pushed towards doing an additional geothermal system. So the recommendations that came out of this report are that we absolutely, for building code requirements, have to involve, have to install forced air ventilation. We recommend that you use heat pumps over variable refrigerant flow, just because VRFs use a lot of refrigerant. They take a lot more maintenance. And if something goes wrong and there's a leak in the system, it can be really hard to track down where that leak is at. So we recommend heat pumps instead. And then using a geothermal system versus air source technology in order to provide the ultimate heat exchange. This, this report also priced other energy upgrades, including roof insulation, new windows and doors, air sealing around all of the spaces and cracks, LED lighting upgrades, and wall insulation. It generally found unless your HVAC is driving to very, very expensive operational costs, that it's just not really worth it to put in the wall insulation. It's much more important to put in roof insulation. But otherwise recommended doing the first three options. And then finally, we would really be required to do ADA compliance as part of this. So we asked the consultant, this wasn't in the original report, but based on feedback from our finance and budget committee, we asked the consultant to provide the costs structured separately. Originally, they looked at four phases, or five phases, and the first four phases were a little confusing. They did it because we asked them to spread out the costs over time. But what they did was they said first phase, install geothermal. But actually, at the end of that first phase, the city would not actually be using the geothermal. Phase two would be to convert the basement level so that it is using the new system. Phase three would be to convert the first floor, phase four, the second floor. So you're not really using the system until you get through phases one and four. So we asked them to revise that and said, hey, first phase of revised phase is just do the HVAC and electrical so that the entire building is taking advantage of the new system. The base HVAC project, which includes the HVAC upgrades, the electrical that's required in order to support the HVAC, and the building code requirements, which is that dedicated outdoor air supply. That really runs to about $17 million. The alternates that they priced add in the additional $3.3 million, includes ADA, LED window replacements, and roof insulation. And then solar PV, we talked about, we could probably push that for a little bit. There are some advantages. I know Councilmember Newsma reached out to me and said solar technology is not really changing that fast anymore. But we were actually looking at some of the newer products like integrated shingles so that it would be more historically appropriate. So you are correct that it isn't, but we would be willing to wait and see what develops over the next five to eight years in terms of those newer technologies. And so to that end, the total cost in 2023 is $22.8 million to upgrade the HVAC and modernize the building for energy use and align it with our CARP program. We could start this project as early as 2025. We don't actually have the funding budgeted for this year. We would need at least 12 months to get a consultant and complete the design work for this project, at which time we could move into construction. That would probably take a minimum of 18 to 24 months to complete. And with that, there were questions also at finance and budget regarding the operations of the building. So I am turning it over to Audrey Thompson.
Thank you. Good evening. I am Audrey Thompson, Parks and Recreation Department Director. Thank you so much. So I'd like to first start off by just a slight contradiction. And I've been contradicted on this several times by our coordinator, Alex Thies. I've called NOISE an incubator several times, and he has politely corrected me. And I looked up the definition of incubator, and it, it says it's a facility designed to nurture and accelerate the growth of new businesses. And I'd like to argue that those artists that are in NOISE Cultural Arts Center are not really new. They are professional. And not that new businesses can't be professional, but they have been around a long time, and they have cultivated their artistry, and I'd like to highlight them tonight. It is the lively home, the NOISE Cultural Arts Center is the lively home of 23 tenants. 21 of those tenants are Evanston residents. They actually provide a little over $300,000 in rental revenue to our department. And they also provide a little under $50,000 in community engagement. And when I say community engagement, that means photography, arts, craft for participants, singing lessons, free scholarships, free tickets, discounted scenic backdrops for our Fleetwood Jordan Theater. So when you come to our theater and you see the backdrops, they do that either for free or at really discounted rates. I'd like to really say that there are so many disciplines that come out of the NOISE Cultural Arts Center. And, and that goes anywhere from photography, woodworking, mixed media, performing arts. We have a lot of those individuals here tonight. Anywhere from Murphy Monroe, I'd like to say he also, where we talk about community engagement, he's also the chair of our ADA, our ADA group that meets once a month over at the Levy Center, over at the library. Sorry about that. And also, that is circus performing. Also Piven Theater, nationally respected. They provide classes and camps, professional training. They've been around for over 50 years. There's Kaiser, there are the Hirschfields. They've been around pretty much from the beginning. But then there's also Jennifer Schuman, Adriana Paterish, Anne Seals, Yancy Hughes, Bonnie Katz, Sarah Pipe Meyer, Maggie Weiss, Petra Yanakim. And then there's just a wealth of individuals that come to the NOISE Cultural Arts Center and provide so much for our community. So that's our tenants. Okay? So that's one program. Then, then we have a second, and that's our Fleetwood Jordan Theater. I just went to the Goodman Theater, and I saw Tim Rose, our, our artist, our director, our theater director, and, and Joe Turner's Come and Gone. That was opening night last Wednesday, and I went to see him. Phenomenal play. That's a professional theater. And in that professional theater, we have a theater director that takes care of our theater right here, and this is unique to a city that we actually have a theater that's right here in our Parks and Recreation Department. And that theater, and that theater provides four productions. That's actually a lot for a city. Over 800 tickets sold, 20 shows per year, and over 40 years of unique inspirational and invigorating African-American and African diaspora-centered storytelling. It is a wonderful opportunity for the novice, but also individuals who have been experienced in theater. So shameless plug, I had to put our 2024 season here. So if you have not bought your tickets yet, please do so for 2024. So that's our second program. And then for our third program, we have our coordinator, Angela Allen, who's been here far longer than me. And she coordinates 12, along with Alex, who puts up all of our galleries every year. 12 to 16 galleries per year, 38 art programs. And a part of that is, and I, I just mentioned a few that are really, that, that people really know about. Renaissance, media, wizard, superhero. Our spring and winter break camps all take place in our NOISE Cultural Arts Center. Also, we have many early education, childhood education arts programs, and many free arts programs, just to name a few. Word Salad, Dance It Yourself, Nutcracker, Art Swap, swap programs. And in those programs, just in that building, we bring about $155,000 in revenue, and we have about 468 participants. And that's not including any of our free programs. So all of our galleries, all of those are free programs. So that's just in the programming that brings in revenue. So I will say that these are three major programs that are held, and it would be difficult for us to duplicate these programs in any of our other community centers or anywhere else in the community.
Councilmember Kelly.
Thank you. I didn't know I had my light on, but I will go ahead and speak. So thank you. I just, you know, this is a wildly successful public center that we have. It is robust and vibrant, and I really just want to say hats off to Director Audrey Thompson for her fine work there, as well as Alex Thies and Angela Allen, and our facilities manager, Sean Cholick. The building is in wonderful shape. It needs new HVAC, needs new electrical, but it is a beautiful building. I go by there almost every day, and it's always robust, people going in and out of the building. It's a joyous place. It's delightful. I've been to so many gallery openings there and shows in the public, in the hallways. I can't say enough about this center. So, and you know, if you want to read more about it, it's very eloquently described on our city's own webpage for the NOISE Cultural Arts Center. You can read, read a really lovely description of it there. I would like to hear from some of, I think, Mr. Yancy Hughes, and I'd like to hear their comments about their experience with the art center. I think it does help to inform us from the firsthand, the folks who are there daily working and are benefiting from this. Is, yeah, sure. I know Yancy came up to speak. Is he still here? Or who, I'm sorry, I don't, you're deferring to?
My name is Murphy.
Murphy, okay. Okay, thank you.
Hi, everybody. My name is Murphy Monroe. Forgive me for wearing sunglasses. I'm autistic, and this is a difficult environment for me to be in. I'm here today, I live in Evanston, grew up in Evanston, and I'm here today as the executive director of the Actors Gymnasium. We are a circus school and theater company that a lot of people in Evanston don't understand, so I'm going to give one minute here. Last year, the Actors Gymnasium taught 1,000 circus students in our facility at the NOISE Cultural Arts Center. Last year, the Actors Gymnasium helped four national theater companies, including the Looking Glass Theater Company and the Goodman Theater Company, create productions that were toured nationally. Those productions were all rehearsed inside the NOISE Cultural Arts Center. The Actors Gymnasium has a professional circus training program, which is only one of six professional circus training programs in all of North America. And students from all over our country compete every And students from all over our country compete every year to be able to come to Evanston and study circus professionally. I also want to make sure that the council is aware that the Actors Gymnasium was founded by Looking Glass Theater Company, and the Actors Gymnasium is headed by Sylvia Hernandez Distazi, who without exaggeration is one of the most respected members in the entire circus community. She is in the literal Circus Hall of Fame. And all of that happens out of our facility right here. I also need to say that we pay more than market rent to be there. It is not true. That building is open a small amount of time, and if you take our rent per hour, it's way more than the $50 per hour average in Evanston. It's just not true that we get subsidized rent. Forgive me. The last thing I want to say is that the Actors Gymnasium, at least for the entire eight years I've been, has given 100% scholarships without asking to every resident who's asked for them. Everyone who's ever asked for, every Evanston resident who's ever asked for financial aid at the Actors Gym was given it in the precise amount they requested. No questions ever asked. We are an important national organization. People know us across the world. Theater companies are dying to work with us. Tommy was produced at Goodman last year and is going on to Broadway, and that show rehearsed in Evanston at the Actors Gymnasium. Evanston has gyms all over the place, hockey, we have multiple hockey rinks, one art center in our entire city, only one. It is a gem, and we must protect it.
Thank you very much. Yes, Mr. Hughes? And while Mr. Hughes is coming in, I just, I also want to mention it is, I think maybe our only public facility that, apart from the upgrades that are needed, really runs in the black, generates money. Okay, I'm sorry. Go ahead, Mr. Hughes. Thank you.
Good evening, council. My name's Yancy Hughes. I'm a photographer in the NOISE Center. I've been there, this is going my fourth year. I really can't say no more than what Audrey says. She says it all. I'm happy to be there. I'm honored to be there. There is a lot of opportunity there for us to reach out to the community. I have taught photography to the elementary schools, to YOU Center. We are there, I hope, bringing joy and creativity to the community, and we would hope that with the proposed improvements, that it remains a place for artists to come and create, and also welcome the community with our talents and creativity.
My name is Adriana Poterash, and I've just came from Milan, Italy, where I received my special prize as universal artist. And I was able to receive this prize and continue my artwork, only thanks because I have a studio in NOISE Art Center. When I was receiving a prize, I was supposed to go up to the podium and to the whole auditorium. It was given in the Leonardo da Vinci Museum of Science and Industry and Technology. I was giving a speech, and in my speech, I praised our art center, because I said how much time each artist gives to our community, those people who cannot pay for art lessons. And, for example, a few years ago, I was giving classes to the orphanage in Chicago, and it had great results. We do a lot. And as I finished my speech in Milan, I finished it here. In whatever happened in the world now, art improves humanity. If anything we should defend, we should defend artists who are giving themselves, because we, honestly, we're not making money. We're just doing out of the depths of our heart because of what we believe in. Thank you.
Hi, good evening, council. My name is Maggie Weiss, and I'm a textile artist. And I have done community service projects. I wanted to let you know about a few of them, so you can actually see evidence of the community service that members of the NOISE Tenants Association contribute to. If you have kids at, or had kids at King Lab, as of 2017, there's a 22-foot by 8-foot mural. I worked with community volunteers and some volunteers from my church with almost every single child in the school, K through 8. All the different grades had different jobs, and then my job was to work in the lobby and put everything together in five panels that measure four feet by eight feet each. Somehow, we wrangled the district to paint the surface above the stairs and get the mural installed after about two years, from beginning to end. So that's just one little sample. I've worked in almost every school in Evanston, Nichols. I've worked at Lydia Home for those, that's the Children's Aid Society, or formerly the Children's Aid Society. And we have a mural at NOISE that I created from all the students from the different organizations who come there for classes. So please check out the evidence in the community that NOISE is a great place for making art. Thanks.
Thank you. So I hope that what we'll discuss and will lead to deciding to invest in the HVAC and electrical upgrade for next year, I think there's a lot, you know, again, as mentioned before, I think when we hire a consultant, we're getting all the possible options. We, just like any building, if it's a brand-new building, I mean, we have brand-new buildings that are already requiring repairs. So I think, but what we do need to do is upgrade that. The building is in good shape. There's a new roof put on about 10 years ago. We've had tuck pointing. We've had, put in two new boilers. So I do applaud, again, facilities management for really maintaining that building. It is beautiful. What I'd like to see is move forward now and is giving direction to staff to go ahead and move forward with the, I think we need some numbers too, right? We don't have professionals in, like geothermal haven't actually come out to give us pricing on that. I think these are estimates, but I think we should go ahead and get some of the actual numbers for geothermal insulation. I'd also like to, I'd like to see staff go ahead and apply now for direct pay. We can certainly submit the application. I believe design is part of what's considered tangible costs, and if we put in 5% this year in some form, whether it's design, we, it's not if, we do get reimbursed. So I'd like to see us move forward with that decision. No matter what we do, this is, it's needed, and it will be an asset to the community in whatever shape or form. You know, I expect this to continue as beautifully as it's been proceeding, this NOISE Cultural Arts Center. So again, I hope we'll continue with, you know, advise staff to move forward for '25 with HVAC, electrical, and apply for the IRA direct pay grants this year. Thank you.
Councilmember Nusma, followed by Harris.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to acknowledge the cultural benefit that Evanston gets out of the NOISE Center. As we, you know, kind of evolve into the post-COVID economy, we're doing stuff like Evanston Thrives, we're reinvesting in our downtown, we hope to get Northlight Theater back. One of the things that sets Evanston apart from elsewhere, other communities in the region, is our commitment to arts and culture, and that's something very consciously we're trying to build on. And the origin of, at least some of this work, can be traced back to training that people got as kids at the NOISE Center, including my kids, who went through the Circus Arts Program. I don't think they're going to be professional acrobats, but it was a great program for the couple summers. I remember seeing a performance at the Fleetwood Jordan Theater a few years ago, a few years ago about the foster school, and that really had an impact on me. And so I want to acknowledge that investing in arts is something we as a community need to do. We as a city council, I believe, are bought into, and this, in front of us right now, is the opportunity to kind of put those values into action. So I hope we can figure out a way to do this. We just got done talking about the Putting Assets to Work Study, and there was a line in that study, which I'll paraphrase, "The most valuable asset of any city is the one that provides a unique sense of place and a sense of community." And I think that really applies to the NOISE Center. And that's aside from the dollars and cents. Yeah, if we look at the dollars and cents, if I'm, my math is correct, we are bringing in $467,000 a year in combined rent and program fees. That's what those numbers add up to, 4,600, 4,67, and $467,104. And that's in 2024, you know? So there is some cash here that will allow us to do more than just maintain the status quo. So I'm pleased that as we are considering what to do to upgrade this building, that we are taking our climate action commitments very much to heart, and we're not considering any other options. The question is not, should we do it? The question is how we're going to do it. And so this counts as progress that I would like the community to be aware of in terms of our climate action commitments. And as we just are a couple of days away from closing out Earth Month, I'm pleased that we're making that progress. All of this does not mean it's not going to cost us some money, and the question before us is how we can come up with that money and, you know, how best to spend it. So the question for staff is, how soon do we need to make this decision? Given the other programs, the other projects that are on our list for the next few years, the Civic Center, the Police and Fire Headquarters, plus Fleetwood, or plus the NOISE Center, three pretty substantial big-ticket projects, is there any way we could get by for another year or two with Band-Aids in NOISE Center and kick this can down the road another year?
So that's actually, it's a really good question, and I think that we have a couple years in which we can pause for a minute on NOISE, but ultimately, we will have to proceed probably within three to five years on moving forward.
So what are we risking if we defer, making any decisions on this for another year?
That's, that is just such a challenging question to answer, because it depends on how the, how the... No, I appreciate that very much. It depends on how HVAC fails, and it also is relevant to some of the building code requirements and the ADA requirements that are not being met. So unfortunately, or fortunately, in order to do an HVAC project like this, you really are doing a lot of impact to the existing walls, ceilings, as you do rewiring, you look at the way that the heating and cooling is distributed, all the piping and the ductwork and everything. You have to make some substantial changes, and then you go in and repair those things. So if you are doing those things, then some of the other things, like ADA improvements, are actually a little bit simpler to implement, because you have a contractor there that is already making those things happen. If you do not have that contractor there and you are mobilizing purely for ADA requirements, then you will be making, so you will pay a premium for that.
I mean, so to me, it does make sense to do this as one project and not spread it out over too many years for that reason. If we wanted to take the first step, which is just the design and engineering, have those costs been broken out?
They have been, and I don't know them right off the top of my head, but, I mean, they're roughly 10% of the construction cost would cover what we're talking about. So, I mean, it is not a small implementation cost to go forward with that. You also run the risk, if you do it way ahead of the construction, then your drawings do age once they're completed, and then they're no longer accurate anymore as things change within the building. So you want to really be, once you start, you really want to move forward and keep going.
Right. Okay. So taking a cautious approach of, or at least a fiscally cautious approach of authorizing only engineering, and then let's see what happens? That, that leaves us some risk. It'd be better, from your perspective, to approve it, the whole shebang from the beginning.
Well, the city only approves its budget one year at a time, and so we should move forward, if we're going to authorize engineering for 2025, we should move forward thinking that the construction would most likely follow in 2026 and 2027. If we don't want to yet authorize the engineering, if we want to say, hey, put engineering in the capital program for 2026, then that's what the staff would respond to. But when we do that, it's knowing that the construction would follow after that.
Yeah, I'm just wondering if, to my colleagues, given what we are in the process of learning about putting assets to work and some, you know, kind of potential new sources of funding for projects, if by the time we get to the construction, if we are proceeding with some of these put-in-assets-to-work recommendations, we might have some ideas, some new ideas about where funding might come from by the time we get to the construction. So I'll just make that observation and leave it there for the next person.
Councilmember Harris, followed by Haddadis.
Thank you so much. And after time, it kind of loses its flavor, but I attended Illinois State University, and we have Gamify Circus at ISU. So I have a little special place in my heart for circus, because I know a lot of clowns. How about that? No. So NOISE Center has a special place for my family. My daughter has been in plays there from a very young age, working with Tim Rhodes. Our sorority has sponsored plays there, so I know what it provides in the black community, a theater that you don't get a lot of places, and that, for obvious reasons, is important to me. So I just wanted to put that, I was trying to get closer to your circus, but everybody else had a chance to talk, so I just wanted to put that information out there. Thank you.
I still bet that I'm the only person up here who ever had a paid job in a circus. A non-metaphorical circus.
We get paid as city councilmembers.
Councilmember Haddadis.
So I personally would like to advocate for, you know, as we, I really appreciate that staff broke down the phases and also the alternates. I appreciate that ADA was in the alternate, but me personally, I think that's something that would have to be addressed right away. I know in the memo, there was a mention, Director Thompson, if maybe you can clarify a little bit, there is a mention that because of our ADA challenges in the building, there's some access and also parts of the building that aren't fully utilized. Could you speak to that a little bit and clarify?
I'd love to have pottery in the basement.
Okay. So, and one of the things I think I really appreciated when we had the ACOM study of this building was the analysis of the space usage. So I think, you know, doing something similar, because it's obvious that it's a well-used, well-loved building, and that, you know, it's, it's being utilized, but if we're going to make, you know, a substantial investment, it also would be smart to look at how to, you know, maximize the space and maybe have more room for more people to, you know, grow the programs and have even more utilization of the building. So I'm, you know, I think we're charged with figuring out where to get some money for this. I know there was debate whether, you know, immediate action on putting assets to work is six months down the line, a year down the line, but I think this, a lot of these impending projects really, I think, should light a fire under us to really dig down and take a look at that report and make some decisions. But I can see that this is, you know, besides the cultural impact, you know, we also have, it's an architectural building that we should be preserving as well, you know, based on the history with Burnham. But I would just advocate for the ADA being included in the first plans, first part of the plans.
So I just want to clarify, though, that this report really deals with, like, keeping the building the way it is, except for HVAC and energy modernization. It does not contemplate changing uses, creating, there's challenges with the basement space, which is why we don't have pottery in the basement right now. So that would be an additional cost to implement those kinds of changes.
Councilmember Ravel.
Well, first, I want to say how wonderful it is to hear from our artist community, and, you know, it is obviously a well-loved and well-used building and provides just amazing resources for our community, our children in particular, but I've always really appreciated... But I've always really appreciated everything that you all do. I want to go to, I think it was a comment that Laura made about big picture. So we've talked about the big picture for Noise Cultural Arts Center. When I think about big picture, I think Noise Cultural Arts Center, Police and Fire Headquarters, and Civic Center. And somehow, I want a giant spreadsheet that says, here's how, here are, here's how much all these different things are going to cost us, and here's how we're going to, the GO bonds that we're going to have to issue to manage to pay for all this. So I, I think we need, we, I don't want to make a decision about noise independently of these other really big decisions that are right, right there as well. So I don't, I don't quite know, I mean, that's a giant spreadsheet that would be complicated to put together, I'm sure, but we need, we need some kind of game plan for how we're going to pay for all of this. So I guess that's staff.
At this time, no one is asking to speak for the first time, so we go back to Councilmember Kelly with a minute twenty left.
Thank you. So first, I want to say it's not, I don't like to hear the term putting Band-Aids on our public, cherished public facilities. Every building, you have to plan for upgrades so many years, and that's what we're looking at right now. We need, I mean, I feel like the need to upgrade the HVAC and the electrical is kind of being politicized here. That's what's needed right now. When we send out a consultant to tell us all the different things they could do, it doesn't mean we take them all and we have to now contemplate this big-ticket $22 million. What we need to contemplate is how very cherished and valuable this center is to our community and look at what's really nondiscretionary in terms of the upgrades that are needed. And I question, you know, the price right now on that. We haven't, right, we haven't yet had a professional geothermal firm or anybody else come out and give us a real estimate, so we don't really even have those numbers. I would like to see, it was just the consultant giving, giving us, I understand his estimates on this, but I think we need to, you know, have, do an RFP, find out what the cost will be to install, actual numbers to look at for the installation of geothermal, which I'm also really excited about, to see us move forward on that. I know the History Center has a very successful geothermal installation, and it'd be great to see us move on our, on a public facility like Noise that's in an ideal location for this. So, you know, I get a little frustrated when I hear us just saying we have to go all or nothing, and we have to look, no, we have, there are facilities that are working beautifully. We need to do the upgrades, and we can look at and we can contemplate, and that's why electrical is included, because of the wall work and everything else that goes in with doing the geothermal. So we would say, even though I understand it's not like desperately needed the electrical, it does need some upgrade, but this would be the time because of the type of construction involved with installing geothermal. So again, I ask that we not slow this down and let this building that's been so, I think overall wonderfully maintained, be pushed off any further. Let's take care of what it needs, and I think what most the resident artist feel needs is HVAC and maybe some electrical. There's no reason we shouldn't be moving forward on that. And again, I think that cost is closer, is, you know, I'm not sure about that total cost. My understanding is that it was around four or five million to do that, and that's what was recommended in this five-year plan for next year. And if we decide on that now or tonight or at another meeting, if we decide to do that and staff does apply for the direct pay, and that includes the design as tangible cost, then we get a refund on this. We're going to get, we'll get a substantial refund on that investment. So I hate to see us slowing this down because we're looking at the whole kit and caboodle and kitchen sink that this, you know, that Salas O'Brien gave us. And, you know, the ADA part of it, it's the toilets making them more efficient for water. It's not about, those bathrooms are, for the most part, ADA compliant. It's about getting better efficiency out of the toilets. We don't have to do that next year. I mean, there's a lot in there that just isn't, we don't need to decide in order to keep that building in beautiful shape and continue to enjoy it. So, thank you.
So we have Salas O'Brien here, and they can talk about how they estimated the geothermal.
Hello. I'm Steve Sovak. I'm a principal at Salas O'Brien, the Chicago office. Benny Skelton from Cycle &amp; Energy was our subconsultant for portions of the project. So we actually did, in the cost estimate, we did kind of a broad-brush schematic design as to approximately how many wells would be included in there. Our firm does a lot of geothermal, large geothermal projects. We're one of the country's largest in doing campus decarbonization projects. So we do, you know, we have done a fair amount of conversions of buildings to being carbon-neutral. So I think we're, you know, we did, at least within the bounds of the study, we did an accurate representation of what might be done. And one thing I did want to speak to as far as the other ancillary things that are in the estimate, if you're going to go ahead with a project like this where ultimately the goal is to become putting, you know, down the road, putting photovoltaic systems in, you want to do work where you're going to minimize your EUI for the building. So, you know, you don't want to do really the minimum amount of work. You want to look at the bigger picture and improve the building performance overall.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that. I, and again, I mean, I think with all of our buildings, we have to look at the stages of upgrades. And so, you know, we're not going to spend $22 million next year or the next year. It's investing in what is most needed now, which is the HVAC. That's, that's what we're looking at now, and then figuring out at what year can we further that investment based on the items that Councilmember Ravel mentioned. Maybe next year, we're investing more heavily in this, and in two or three years down the road, we invest in other aspects of, that you proposed or not, depending on how technology, I know solar, you know, what our Preservation Commission has to say about some of the plans also. So I think, you know, there's a lot at hand that may change over the years, but it certainly gets scaffolded, any facility does. They're not Band-Aids, it's just what you do to maintain a facility, you upgrade. So, thank you very much.
Okay. Thank you.
That concludes the discussion of this item and brings us to the consent agenda. I have got a little list of items to start out. Item A13 is being removed from the consent agenda just for the purposes of explaining an amendment that was made in committee. Item A33 is being removed for the purposes of, I think, clarity essentially. And then items A41, A42, A43, and P2 are being removed for consideration for introduction and action. Councilmember Hadda-Carres?
Could you remove A16?
A16?
Councilmember Nusma?
A21 is, assuming Councilmember Safford, and will be voting on that one. And I think you mentioned A33, also A34 for purposes of clarity as well.
Okay. Councilmember Harris?
A37 and 38, 37 and 38.
A37 and 38. Councilmember Kelly?
A3, A6, A26, A35, and A39.
So at this time, I regret to inform you that I have A36, nope, that's not how numbers go. This is how numbers go. A3, A6, A13, A16, A21, A26, A33, A34, A35, A37, A38, A39. Inhale. A41, A42, A43, and P2. Councilmember Reed?
Yeah. If I can suggest for the items, I think there are two or three items that we're pulling for introduction and action. I would just, I'm happy to move that for those three items or for however many items that we suspend our rules to allow introduction and action as part of the consent.
So let's take that vote now, and then we'll, and before the consent agenda motion, if that passes unanimously, then we're clear. All right. So Councilmember Reed moves to suspend the rules so that items A41, A42, A43, and P2 may all be introduced and acted upon tonight. Is there a second?
Second.
Councilmember Nusma, seconds. Seeing a discussion with the clerk, please take the roll on the motion to suspend the rules.
Councilmember Winn?
Aye.
Councilmember Nusma?
Aye.
Councilmember Safford?
Aye.
Councilmember Ravel?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember Hadda-Carres?
Aye.
Councilmember Kelly?
Aye.
Councilmember Harris?
Aye.
With eight voting in favor and none voting against, the motion carries, and therefore the four items previously read, A41, 42, and 43, as well as P2, may be introduced and acted upon tonight, and therefore they will no longer be removed from the consent agenda.
And for the tattoo folks that I, the parlor folks, that means you're good.
Hey, Mr. Mayor, could you please remove item A21?
Yep. Been done already.
Thanks, sir.
Any additions?
In that case, I would take a motion relative to the consent agenda.
I'll move the consent agenda minus the items that have been listed.
Second.
Councilmember Reed moves the consent agenda with the exceptions of items A3, A6, A13, A16, A21, A26, A33, A34, A35, A37, A38, and A39, and with the proviso that items A41, A42, A43, and P2 be introduced and acted upon pursuant to the rules just suspended. I was once briefly a paid circus performer but was never a paid auctioneer. Councilmember Harris, seconds. Would the clerk please take the roll?
Councilmember Winn?
Aye.
Councilmember Nusma?
Aye.
Councilmember Safford?
Aye.
Councilmember Ravel?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember Hadda-Carres?
Aye.
Councilmember Kelly?
Aye.
Councilmember Harris?
Aye.
With eight voting in favor and none voting against, the motion carries, and the consent agenda with the adjustments and exceptions just described is passed. Now, Councilmember Nusma, do you have a motion relative to item A3?
Mr. Mayor, I move approval of contract with Terra Engineering for the 2024 Capital Improvement Project's construction engineering in the not-to-exceed amount of $343,049.
Second.
Councilmember Nusma moves approval of the project, contract with Terra Engineering Limited. Councilmember Winn, seconds. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, would the clerk, Councilmember Kelly?
Sorry, I pulled this, I just, I had a question about the general oversight of the water main. Is there a reason we can't do this in-house?
Currently, we have a number of civil engineering positions, architect and landscape architect positions that are all vacant. And so it's really, there is an aspect to construction oversight where you are just standing there and watching, especially on items that get buried underground once they're complete. And so we just need more staff than we have available.
And so have we, have the positions that are needed been posted for a long time? Or, I'm just trying to understand, because I'm understanding we have an issue with filling positions, so I'm trying to get a better grasp on why we're not getting positions filled and...
Some of these positions have been posted in excess of two years. We've done interviews, we don't get very many people apply, and we've done multiple rounds of interviews and don't get people accepting job offers.
So, I mean, is there a, is there another approach that maybe we need to look at for hiring? I'm just wondering if there's, like, firms that can bring, bring forward. I just, you know, I'm hearing, I saw the group tonight, our staff here, our employees with concern about understaffing and not getting positions filled. I just, I just question if we're going about the hiring in the right way. I mean, it would be preferable always to have, you know, these are, we're doing this in large part because we don't have these positions filled, they've been posted for several, how many positions have been posted for several years but not filled?
At least three of those have been posted for a year and a half or more.
Okay. So this, I would, you know, ask City Manager Stowe to look into how we can address the situation so that we aren't having to rely on outsourcing because we have positions that are just simply not getting filled. I also suspect, not just in this area, but in other areas, there's an impact as a result of, you know, we're paying for these positions, but they're not getting filled. So, you know, I don't know if there's, if we, how we can go about that, but I'd like to ask that there be some, and I know I've written to you, City Manager Stowe, for a list of the vacancies, how many vacancies we've had that haven't been filled. This seems to be an issue that needs to, we're going to need to take a different approach.
Sure. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Kelly. Just wanted to mention that Councilmember Nusma asked about this earlier today, and that was included in the APW answers to the questions that were raised by Councilmember Nusma. There is a nationwide shortage of civil engineers, and so we are actively trying to recruit civil engineers. It's very difficult to compete with the private sector on this as well.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilmember Nusma. Seeing no further discussion, would the clerk please take the roll?
Councilmember Winn? Councilmember Nusma?
Aye.
Councilmember Safford?
Aye.
Councilmember Ravel?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember Hadda-Carres?
Aye.
Councilmember Kelly?
Aye.
Councilmember Harris?
Aye.
With eight voting in favor and none voting against, the motion carries, and the contract is approved. Now on item A6, Councilmember Nusma?
I move approval of the contract award to Brightview for business district maintenance services in the amount of $380,000, I'm sorry, $380,000.
Second.
Councilmember Nusma moves approval of the contract award to Brightview. Councilmember Winn, seconds. Councilmember Kelly?
So again, just a comment about outsourcing. Other cities that I've consulted with are able to keep their downtowns and business districts clean. I'd like to, again, just for the record, and I was pleased to hear that Manager Paul Zalmansek said they would absolutely look into and discuss bringing this in-house. I, you know, even with the previous A3, I know private firms are hiring quick, more quickly, so I just, I think that we do need to take a hard look at what we're doing to get positions filled, and I hope that next year, we will have employees to cover, cover our business district, you know, the maintenance of our business districts with regard to garbage and general cleanup. Thank you.
Councilmember Reed?
I will just second that as a, I do think I personally, while I'm going to support this tonight, would like to see this come in-house. I would like to see, you know, these folks, where, you know, visible members of our staff out in the community doing this work. I think it's really important, and, you know, we could maybe have some more controls over hiring local folks. These are positions that could easily go to folks who are, you know, either starting off in the workforce or continuing on and need a, need some opportunities. So I would like to see this come in-house, but supportive today.
Councilmember Nusma?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to note that we're taking this money from our ARPA budget for this expense. Moving forward, at least a portion of this might be paid by Northwestern as part of our community benefits package, pending, of course, some discussion with the university.
Would the clerk please take the roll?
Councilmember Winn? Councilmember Nusma?
Aye.
Councilmember Hadda-Carres?
Aye.
Oh, I mean, sorry. Councilmember Safford?
Aye.
Councilmember Safford? Okay. Councilmember Ravel?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember Hadda-Carres was an "aye"?
Aye.
Yes. And Councilmember Kelly?
Aye.
Councilmember Harris?
Aye.
With eight voting in favor and none voting against, the motion carries, and the contract is approved. And now on item A13, Councilmember Nusma?
Mr. Mayor, I move approval of change order number three to the agreement for Civic Center and Police Fire Headquarters relocation feasibility study. This was RFP 21-27. This comes to us from ANPW with an amendment from what's in the packet. ANPW unanimously recommended incorporating the statistically valid survey into this with, for an additional $17,000.
The motion fails for lack of a second?
Seven.
Oh. I tried. Councilmember Nusma moves approval of change order number three, which has been amended as previously described. Councilmember Winn, seconds. Councilmember Reed?
Yeah, I'll be very brief on this. I will just share that I was somewhat uncomfortable with the addition of the statistically, not significant, statistically valid...
Valid, yes.
Statistically valid survey, because I don't think it gets to the, to the heart of information that we need now, but staff shared that there would be more opportunity for the council and for members who are interested to be engaged with the survey to make sure that, you know, as the decision-makers here, that we're getting the information we need out of this, because it seemed like that, at least the first round of questions that I heard that may be on the survey just wouldn't be useful for me now. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And just, at the risk of prolonging this, I'll just say, I second all of that, absolutely.
Would the clerk please take the roll?
Councilmember Wen?
Aye.
Councilmember Nusma?
Aye.
Councilmember Sufferton?
Aye.
Councilmember Revel?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember Haraqaris?
Aye.
Councilmember Kelly?
Aye.
Councilmember Harris?
Aye.
With eight voting in favor and none voting against, the change order as amended is approved. And now on item A 16, Councilmember Nusma?
Mr. Mayor, I move approval of Resolution 6R24 authorizing the city manager to execute an easement agreement with Northwestern University for a subsurface installation and maintenance of a telecommunications system.
Second.
Councilmember Nusma moves approval of Resolution 6-R-24. Councilmember Wen seconds. Is there any discussion? Councilmember Kelly?
Just a short comment, and I brought up APW. So this will generate unbudgeted revenue of $78,000 this year. I would just ask, I think we knew we would be, this agreement was gonna be renewed, that we had estimated that into the budget process during budget season. So, you know, when we, when we have contracts that can be renewed, I think, I think that could have been incorporated into our budget. Thank you.
Would the clerk please take the roll?
Councilmember Wen?
Aye.
Councilmember Nusma?
Aye.
Councilmember Sufferton?
Aye.
Councilmember Revel?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember Haraqaris?
Aye.
Councilmember Kelly?
Aye.
Councilmember Harris?
Aye.
With seven voting in favor and none voting against, the motion carries and Resolution 6-R-24 is passed. And now on item A 21, Councilmember Nusma?
Mr. Mayor, I move approval, I move approval of the BMO Harris Amazon Credit Card Activity in the amount of $13,373.92.
Second. Councilmember Nusma moves approval of BMO Harris Amazon Credit Card Activity. Councilmember Reed seconds. Would the clerk please take the roll?
Councilmember Wen?
Aye.
Councilmember Nusma?
Aye.
Councilmember Sufferton?
Aye.
Councilmember Revel?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember Haraqaris?
Aye.
Councilmember Kelly?
Aye.
Councilmember Harris?
Aye.
With seven voting in favor and none voting against and one abstention, the motion carries and the credit card activity is approved. Now on item A 26, Councilmember Nusma?
A 26, Mr. Mayor, I move approval of the contract with Garland DBS for the 2024 Roofing and Envelope Repairs Contract in the amount of $595,316.
Second. Councilmember Nusma moves approval of contract with Garland DBS Incorporated. Councilmember Reed seconds. Councilmember Kelly?
A question for clarification. So, we're waiving the local employment program requirements. I'm just questioning how, I mean, don't we have local roofing here in town that we?
Members of the council, my name is Laura Biggs. I'm the city engineer. So, we do have local roofers, but we don't necessarily have availability of roofing union members that are able to work on the project. So Garland has reached out, they have been unable to locate that person.
Okay, thank you.
Would the clerk please take the roll?
Councilmember Wen?
Aye.
Councilmember Nusma?
Aye.
Councilmember Sufferton?
Aye.
Councilmember Revel?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember Haraqaris?
Aye.
Councilmember Kelly?
Aye.
Councilmember Harris?
Aye.
With eight voting in favor and none voting against, the motion carries, sorry, with eight voting in favor and none voting against, the motion carries and the contract is approved. And now on item A 33, Councilmember Nusma?
Mr. Mayor, I move approval of staff's recommendation for beach chair and bike rentals this summer at Clark Street Beach following option three as presented in the memo. This is what ANPW agreed on on April 8th.
Second.
Councilmember Nusma moves approval of the third recommendation in the packet. This was pulled specifically to make sure that we were crystal clear about what exactly was being approved. So again, Councilmember Nusma moves approval of recommendation number three. Councilmember Harris seconds. Councilmember Reed followed by Kelly.
Thank you. I just have a, and I'm sorry, Director, I'm trying not to violate the no surprises rule, but it just popped into my head. So, maybe, and this is for legal, I think, the question, but are, are e-bikes, are e-bikes legal in Evanston?
So, this is not necessarily my area of expertise, but yes, e-bikes are legal in Evanston. Most e-bikes are pedal assist, which means that you can't really go faster than you would normally be able to pedal, but it helps you with hills and more challenging wind conditions and such things. So, those are legal, and they are legal to use in our bike lanes.
Thank you. I, I think in the last term, was there an update to the ordinance to make them legal? I remember, were you, go ahead.
Yeah, thank you, Councilmember Reed. Good evening, Mayor. Members of City Council, Alex Regge Corporation Council, I just wanted to specify, so there are restrictions on e-bikes still within the city of Evanston. They're not allowed on sidewalks and through other paths, specifically some of the walking bike paths that are mixed.
So like the lakefront path?
I believe they're allowed on the lakefront path, but when they're like through our parks that are walking paths are not. So, there's just certain restrictions that can be found in the city code, but in certain areas and on the roadways, they are allowed.
Okay. I, I, you know, I support this and particularly that option that Councilmember Nusma is, that staff is suggesting. I do think we need to look at, to just double-check our laws on e-bikes, to make sure that we're following it, and I think this council will be willing to make the necessary updates to, to that. And also, I think adding into the e-bikes is, we are, I think, forcing folks to ride around illegally on the e-scooters. So, I think that's also, we have a new transportation coordinator somewhere, maybe not here tonight, hopefully.
She was leaving when we were coming.
Okay. And, so I, I think we need to, you know, look at both of these things. So if anyone wants to join me in a referral to clean up whatever we need to clean up here with the e-bikes and simultaneously with the scooters, actually, I think Councilmember Sufferton and someone else maybe already co-sponsored that a while ago, but I think we need to get movement on it sooner than later. Thank you.
Councilmember Kelly?
Thank you. So I expressed this last time. I think, my feelings are is that if we've made a decision as a council to rent out our lakefront to private vendors for e-bikes and chairs, that should have been a decision, I feel, first, and then, you know, an RFP. So I realize it doesn't cost us more than $25,000, but that shouldn't, to me, in this scenario, that shouldn't be the guiding point as to whether or not it's a decision that council has to make on a contract, because I don't know how much this vendor is gonna earn, but I'm, it'll certainly exceed that, so, by using our lakefront. So although it won't cost us per se, there is somebody using our space and making more than that amount of money. So, that would have been my preference, and additionally, you know, again, I've received only negative feedback from constituents with regard, particularly to the bikes and the paths, and that they're gonna end up, you know, getting, being on the walking path. So, I said that I could maybe be swayed, and I appreciated Director Thompson following the Parks and Rec Board's advice, I believe, with regard to the chairs, but since it's an all-in-one package, I can't support it. Thank you.
Would the clerk please take the roll?
Councilmember Wen?
Aye.
Councilmember Nusma?
Aye.
Councilmember Sufferton?
Aye.
Councilmember Revel?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember Haraqaris?
Aye.
Councilmember Kelly?
No.
Councilmember Harris?
Aye.
With seven voting in favor and one voting against, the motion carries and the direction has been given. Now on item A 34, Councilmember Nusma?
Mr. Mayor, I move approval of the contract with Albry Construction Company for the Independence and Laramore Park renovation project, which is bid 2406, and ANPW recommends funding option number one.
Second.
Councilmember Nusma moves approval of the contract with Albry Construction Company in the utilizing funding option number one. Councilmember Wen seconds. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, would the clerk please take the roll?
Councilmember Wen?
Aye.
Councilmember Nusma?
Aye.
Councilmember Sufferton?
Aye.
Councilmember Revel?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember Haraqaris?
Aye.
Councilmember Kelly?
Aye.
Councilmember Harris?
Aye.
With eight voting in favor and none voting against, the motion carries and the contract is approved. And now on item A 35, Councilmember Nusma?
P 35, did not catch that one. Mr. Mayor, I move approval of the participatory budgeting proposal for the CARE collective program. That's culture, arts, recreation, and education, which includes opportunities for racial, for racially marginalized students.
Second.
Councilmember Nusma moves approval of the participatory budgeting for the CARE collective program. Councilmember Harris seconds. Councilmember Kelly?
So I just want to clarify, so this is $720,000 that we are providing to Northwestern, right, for the college tours and, and other, correct?
So, Audrey Thompson, Director Parks and Recreation. So, it will be more like a pass-through, so I will still be on the committee to navigate. But, so yes, they will provide the funding for the tours and also the incentives to the young people for this proposal.
We're providing the funding?
Right.
To them?
To them. From the ARPA. So it's from ARPA.
To Northwestern, okay. $720,000. And, you know, I just, I know there's Evanston Scholars at ETHS, and I spoke with the executive director, and nobody reached out to him, and I know he does much of this. I was, I'm just a little bit concerned about duplicate work and...
So Northwestern created the platform for EO3 that goes from District 65 and 202, and that's the platform that we're using in order to use for the incentives. So Northwestern sat on the committee to actually write the proposal for this. I'm, I'm not sure about Evanston Scholars, so, yeah.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, I just wanted to make sure that was clear.
I worked with them.
Right, yeah.
I did work with them, and their young people will be included in the incentives, but Northwestern actually created the platform, we're able to use it for no additional fee.
Right. Thank you. No, I just wanted to make sure that was clarified for the public. Thank you very much.
Would the clerk please take the roll?
Councilmember Wen?
Aye.
Councilmember Nusma?
Aye.
Councilmember Sufferton?
Aye.
Councilmember Revel?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember Haraqaris?
Aye.
Councilmember Kelly?
Aye.
Councilmember Harris?
Aye.
With eight voting in favor and none voting against, the motion carries and the proposal is approved. Now on item A 37, Councilmember Nusma?
Mr. Mayor, I move approval of Resolution 26R24, which is an honorary street sign in the name of Oliver A. Ruff.
Second.
Go forward, it's yours.
It was close, it was close, but Councilmember Nusma moves approval of Resolution 26-R-24, and Councilmember Reed seconds. Councilmember Reed? Thank you. And thank you, Councilmember Harris, for pulling this off the agenda. We're really looking forward to this, the street naming. Mr. Ruff has been a tremendous asset to our community, not only serving as a principal here in District 65 for quite some time, but, you know, even in his retirement, creating the Oliver A. Ruff Scholarship Fund, which has, you know, helped a number of students be able to afford, be able to cover costs for, for college. And so, really honored to, to be a part of the street naming. And I think what's special about every street naming that I know of, but what's special to me about this is, you know, Mr. Ruff didn't come to me and say, hey, I'd like this street naming. You know, I didn't just look out and see, you know, all the great work that many folks are doing. It was the community that, you know, came to me and, and asked about this process and making sure that we honored Mr. Ruff in this way. And so, and this is the first street naming that I think I've done in this term, so just really honored to be a part of this, particularly for someone who's had such a long career of service like Mr. Ruff. Thank you.
Councilmember Harris?
I just wanted to echo, Mr. Ruff has been an upstanding citizen in the Evanston community, and it's our honor to be able to name a street after him and to have him be one of our citizens. So, I just wanted to echo. I've known Mr. Ruff all of my life. He knew me before I knew me, and has been a great man, nothing new, very unassuming. I know he didn't ask, and he probably blushed when was told that this was happening. So, Mr. Ruff, hats off to you once we vote, and very worthy.
Yeah, I'll just quickly add, I saw Mr. Ruff last night at the Cherry Scholarship Dinner, and I was like, hey, you coming tomorrow night? And he's not only like the nicest guy in the world, he's also the most humble guy in the world, and he was like, I don't know, that doesn't seem appropriate. I mean, I don't want to put you guys on the spot, what if there's some argument? And so I said, I gave him a big hug, and I decided I was not gonna argue, and I said we're gonna do a really, really nice ceremony with him and his family when we unveil the sign in appreciation for all he's done for this community. So, as long as y'all are willing to vote yes now, I think we can, we can have a really lovely unveiling before too long. Would the clerk please take the roll?
Councilmember Wen?
Aye.
Councilmember Nusma?
Aye.
Councilmember Sufferton?
Aye.
Councilmember Revel?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember Haraqaris?
Aye.
Councilmember Kelly?
Yes.
Councilmember Harris?
Yes. Aye.
With eight voting in favor and none voting against, the motion carries. Resolution 26-R-24 is passed, and the honorary street will be, the street will be honorably named.
Woo! Congratulations, Mr. Ruff.
That's right. Councilmember Nusma on item A 38.
Mr. Mayor, I move approval of Resolution 28R24, a contract with Hoffman House Catering for senior meal food programs at a projected value of $26,773.
Second. Councilmember Nusma moves approval of Resolution 28-R-24. Councilmember Reed seconds. Councilmember Harris?
Hi, and I know we're not supposed to surprise, but I'm pretty sure Director Thompson knows where I'm going. So, just wanted to know, I know we talked about Meals on Wheels and why I don't see Meals on Wheels, anything local, so, thank you.
So, we addressed that back in October. So we addressed that back in October. So that was the notification of grant award back in October. This is the actual contract. So the, so this is the second part of what's already been awarded. So we're, right, so we're already past that part. Also, Meals on Wheels is higher than Hoffman. And so we went through that process back in October, and they did not. So when, in October, when Brandon came, he had already contacted Meals on Wheels, and their fee was higher than the contracted amount for Hoffman House.
Do you remember how much higher?
It was substantially higher, but I, I don't remember how much.
Okay.
But he did all, he did all the research to find, to ensure that we had someone from Evanston. It just, it just didn't work, yeah.
Okay, thanks.
Councilmember Reed.
Yeah, on that point, thank you, Councilmember Harris, for raising that. I will just suggest that for, and this isn't directly for you, Director, this is city manager and citywide, I think for contracts like this one, that there could be a local solution to finding a local provider. I do think that we should do a, do more and do a better job of letting residents know, getting the information out there that this opportunity exists and that right now it's filled, but can some local entrepreneur build capacity over the next six months to a year to be able to respond to the, you know, a new RFP at that point? And, and so just not for this contract, but I think across the board, where, where we know that our contractor is outside of the city, maybe there's a dedicated webpage for every contract that we have that is provided by a non-Evanston-based business or, you know, maybe this is something that MWEBE could look at, but MWEDB. But so that is my suggestion. I think we can do a better job of trying to figure out, or trying to let residents know that these opportunities exist so we can keep that money local. And I also think that there, you know, with our analysis of, you know, again, I remember the price, I think you said, being significantly higher, but again, if the price is modestly higher to support an Evanston business, and I'm sure you do this already, Director, but again, just system-wide, we certainly need to make sure that we're taking the Evanston-based business into account. And I think in, in some of our processes, we do. Thank you.
And I will make sure that Brandon and Connor get you that information, because I know that when he came back in October, he provided some information, and I'll make sure he gets that to you.
Would the clerk please take the roll?
Councilmember Nguyen?
Aye.
Councilmember Nusma?
Aye.
Councilmember Sephardan?
Aye.
Councilmember Revel?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember Harakaris?
Aye.
Councilmember Kelly?
Aye.
Councilmember Harris?
Aye.
With eight voting in favor and none voting against, the motion carries. Resolution 28-R-24 is passed, and now on item A 39, Councilmember Nusma.
Mr. Mayor, I move approval of Resolution 27R-24, authorizing the city manager to sign the Second Amendment to the lease agreement with 633 Outpost LLC at 633 Howard Street, which is Estacion.
Second. Councilmember Nusma moves approval of Resolution 27-R-24. Councilmember Reed, second. Councilmember Reed, followed by Kelly.
Yeah, I'm, I think I'm going to be direct here. We have had particular, the city has had some issues with this business owner in being able to collect rent, and that's what this amendment is about. And it's the Second Amendment. The First Amendment was toward the top of the pandemic, or I should say toward the outset of the pandemic, if you will. And it's because, you know, understandably, there were issues opening then, but the issues have continued. The business is now open for a while. It took quite a while for the business to open. They are now open, but we are still continuing to have some issues. I'm going to be supporting this amendment today, and I encourage my colleagues to support it, but I also, I think, have to be frank with my colleagues and with the public that, you know, we've had some issue here, and it, and I just think that that needs to be stated transparently. I will say, you know, check them out. I went in, at this point, maybe a few months ago, maybe a few weeks ago, great food, had some grilled octopus, it was wonderful. I recommend folks go and have it. It's a very upscale, well, you know, moderately upscale, you know, Puerto Rican restaurant. And so great food, great addition to Howard Street. And so I want to continue to support this business, and I want, and, you know, I think they also own another business in the second ward as well, both great establishments. But I do think, you know, I don't know if the business owner is here or watching, but hear us, please, you know, let, I hope we're going to approve this, but I think this would be the last amendment that I would be supportive of, and I really want to see the business here, and I really want to see the diversity of food options on Howard continue, but we got to get this in order. So, thank you.
Councilmember Kelly.
Thank you. So similar sentiment, I want to support this, we want to see Outpost succeed. I guess I'm just looking for reassurances. They, I think they're in 126,000 in arrears with the city now and starting effective May 1st. In addition to the rent, they're supposed to pay an additional $1,000 a month towards that, and then on January 1st, $2,000 a month towards that. So I'm looking maybe to Paul Zalmasak to give us some reassurances why we think this is realistic or feasible.
Thank you. Good evening, members of the council. Once again, I'm Paul Zalmasak, Economic Development Manager. I have invited Marcos Rivera, the proprietor, he is on the Zoom call. Honestly, I, I'm just being optimistic, and I'm hopeful that he will, now that he's set up, he's reporting that he's recovered from the pandemic, he's got multiple restaurants in the region. This is our only hope. Otherwise, we shut them down and we try to collect the back rent, which I don't think is the outcome we really care about. We want the business thriving. It's one of the reasons this has dragged on as long as it has. Mr. Rivera's been very apologetic. It's also a difficult position for me to be in as Economic Development Manager, to try to support business and keep them alive, but also trying to be the hammer as a landlord. And I think we fixed that up on our, we have a new way that we're going to address the revenue side of things in terms of collecting rents. So I think with diligent follow-up, we're going to, well, May 1st is this week, so, you know, Mr. Rivera, can you commit to all of us that you're, you're going to abide by this agreement? And there, there's no Third Amendment. I, unless I'm directed by the city council to bring a Third Amendment, I would, I would never recommend a Third Amendment to this deal.
Okay, thank you. And I appreciate that we're waiving the interest in all penalties and everything else on the ar, on the arrears, but I guess I would love to hear from him, because it will go up not only the rent, which is behind, but plus 1,000 and then plus 2,000 on January 1st. So I'd love to hear how, what the plans are.
Mr. Rivera, can you, can you, thank you.
Thank you. I want to thank Evanston for the support, and again, apologize for the kind of situation that, that we're in here. I didn't expect to be in this type of situation, but, so, but here we are, and I, you know, I'm doing, my partner and I are doing everything that, you know, we possibly can to, to, to get it, you know, to get it together and move it in the right direction. So we have taken out a loan and are going to reinvest more money into our, you know, social media. Tomorrow, we have a big photo shoot. The week after, The Sun Times is coming out on May 9th, I believe, and they're going to do a feature on us and, you know, just put all of our, you know, not that we haven't, but even put more, more effort forth in, in all of our, you know, everything we're doing to, to promote the business. We have, you know, we've been in partnership with a theater down the street, and, you know, we're looking for any, anything that we can do to help, you know, help the business. We also promote it in, you know, the other businesses, newsletters and in socials and the others as well. So, you know, we're hoping with, with this big photo shoot tomorrow with the new social media manager, and, you know, it's either me, my partner, or my wife there all the time, so we're, you know, we're, we're there all hands on deck, you know, doing the best that we can. And, you know, we were getting this plan together, and, you know, we, we plan to dig out of this and move forward. We've cut our labor, you know, we've done everything possible to kind of, to, to be able to make up this money and, and, you know, show Evanston our gratitude and, and, you know, make sure that we live up to our end of the deal.
Thank you. So I'm understanding the, the main piece that's changing is the social media, that you didn't do that before, you had a, it wasn't managed well?
Well, we, yeah, we did not, you know, because we started this project way before COVID. So all of our funds, you know, by the time we opened, there wasn't much funds left with, you know, to, to have a social media person on or to, you know, to do much advertising at that point. We had to hire people. We didn't know, you know, we were expected to be busier than it was, so we overhired. So we had, instead of being able to put money forth into advertising and, and, you know, social media and other types of advertising, we were using that for salaries. As time went on, you know, we had to cut that, and now, you know, we are going to start off with investing in, in advertising and, and then, you know, bring on, bring on people as business picks up.
Okay, thank you. I guess I, thank you. I'll support this. I guess I just want to put it in the context of our $250,000 Small Business Recovery and Growth Fund, and we have like 82 applicants trying to get $25,000, and this is like so far, I mean, depending how this goes, it could be like a, you know, $125,000 investment from the city, hoping that it's going to make it, so. Thank you.
No, I understand, I, I, I understand where you're coming from, and I, I hear what you're saying, and I, you know, we will, you know, make sure that we live up to our end of the, of the deal and do everything possible to get there as quick as possible.
Thank you.
At this time, no one is asking to speak for the first time, so we go back to Councilmember Reed with two minutes and 25 seconds left.
I'll defer. Thank you.
Would the clerk please take the roll?
Councilmember Nguyen?
Aye.
Councilmember Nusma?
Aye.
Councilmember Sephardan?
Aye.
Councilmember Revel?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember Harakaris?
Aye.
Councilmember Kelly?
Aye.
Councilmember Harris?
Aye.
With eight voting in favor and none voting against, the motion carries. Resolution 27-R-24 is passed. This brings us to call of the wards. Councilmember Nguyen?
Yes, thank you very much. The next third ward office hours will be this coming Thursday, May 2nd, from 7:30 to 9:30 at Brothers K. And then there will be a joint first and third ward meeting about the Folk Festival, and that will be... September, no, May 7th. May 7th at the Dawes House at 6 o'clock. All right, thank you.
Councilmember Nusma.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First off, I want to thank all of the fourth ward residents who came out to Fitzsimmons Park a week ago Sunday to help with the community beautification project. Thanks to the leadership of Ellie Shavik and Nina Tatarowicz, and the sweat equity of Ezra Shavik and a certain fourth ward council member, we have replaced all the park benches, and, and they are all freshly decorated by Neighborhood Kids. And incidentally, the lumber was donated by Evanston Lumber, so thank you to that local business. The next ward meeting will be Tuesday, May 7th, 7:00 PM at Robert Crown, and will be virtual as well. And office hours will be Saturday, May 11th, from 10:00 AM to noon, hopefully at Tapestry Station, which is where they were scheduled in April, but I couldn't make that one, so hope to see you there. Thank you.
Councilmember Revel?
Oh, no report.
Councilmember Reed?
No report.
Councilmember Harakaris?
Check the city calendar for May 30th. There will be a joint ninth, second, and fourth ward meeting. We have a special guest, Sierra Fiorito will be there, and we will be discussing pedestrian and traffic safety, and working together on some of the shared pain points that we have in the neighborhood, and hope to see as many people as possible there. Related, please keep filling out the Envision Evanston 2045 surveys. One of the things you can fill out is places that you feel need improvement, and that is going to very much help with our efforts. And it will be in-person at Crown, and it will also be hybrid, so we want as many people there as possible. Thanks.
Councilmember Kelly.
Thank you. There is a, an NU City Meeting this Wednesday at 5:30, and I just want to make sure that's clear, it's at 5:30, not 6:30, where we'll hear about NU's plans for a temporary football game facility at the Lanny and Sharon Martin Athletic Field, the practice field's on the lake. So come with your questions. We'll also discuss the truck route and, and any other questions or concerns. And then the following week, on May 7th, as Councilmember Nguyen mentioned, we have a joint first and, and third ward meeting to hear about Spaces Folk Festival, about the plans for that, to ask, answer questions and hear concerns. And that's at the beautiful Dawes House at 6:00 PM on May 7th. Thank you.
Councilmember Harris.
Thank you. As Councilmember Harakaris mentioned, we will have a joint fourth, ninth, and second ward meeting, May 30th. We hosted a really good meeting this past Thursday at Robert Crown, and I attended the fifth ward walk, and I was looking for the name this weekend, and it was a really good event. Had a lot of people, a lot of lively discussion. So thank you so much for inviting me.
Councilmember Nusma is recognized to make a motion.
Pursuant to five Illinois compiled statutes, 120/2C2, I move that the city council convene into executive session to discuss agenda items regarding litigation. These agenda items are permitted subjects to be considered in executive session and are enumerated exceptions under the Open Meetings Act. Those exceptions being 5 ILCS 120/2, C 511, and is it also 21? Just C 511. Thank you.
Second.
Councilmember Nusma moves to the city council to resolve itself into an executive session to, to discuss the item just mentioned. Councilmember Harris, second. Would the clerk please take the roll?
Councilmember Nguyen?
Aye.
Councilmember Nusma?
Aye.
Councilmember Sephardan?
Aye.
Councilmember Revel?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember Harakaris?
Aye.
Councilmember Kelly?
Aye.
Councilmember Harris?
Aye.
With seven voting in favor and none voting against, the motion carries. And at 8:07 PM, the city council resolves into an executive session to begin immediately in the councilmember library.